And trustee Wyatt House for the last four years, well, six for some of you, five. I don't know how many Wyatt, six, and I know six for Tim. That you dedicated to our town, making some really tough decisions in bad situations. I think often there's celebrations when elections are won and not too often a thank you following. So as you guys leave office, I thought it was important to thank you guys. Thank you for everything that you've done for our town. Thank you for the hard work you've put in on getting these construction projects underway. Hopefully we'll move some dirt soon. And thank you for everything that you did for both Lowry and myself during the campaign to provide us information, support and being such great candidates with us. We appreciate you all three. So please, as you leave tonight, hold your head high and know that you did a really good job.
Thank you, Lisa. Appreciate it. And thanks for running. Who else? You sure? Okay. We're gonna move on then. Oh, we got a proclamation tonight. I like these things. Let's do this one now. Whoa, proclamation during April 11th through the 17th, we're going to declare this the windy month Wellington. All right, start it over. All right, Public Service Recognition Week. Whereas public service is an honorable calling that involves a wide variety of challenging and rewarding professions which are essential to the efficient and effective operation of government and the town of Wellington's employees, volunteers, boards and commissions contribute significantly to the quality of life of the community with their commitment to excellence, high ethical standards and diversity of skills and whereas excellence in the delivery of public service helps keep Wellington strong, prosperous and a wonderful place to which to live, work, play and volunteer. And whereas this commemoration provides an opportunity to express our appreciation for the many contributions public servants make to our daily lives. And therefore be resolved, I Mayor Troy Hammond, that April 11th through 12th, 17th, 2022 is recognized as Public Service Recognition Week in the town of Wellington. And the board encourages the community to recognize and accomplish and accomplishments and contributions of public servants. Day this 12th, date, April 2022. That's important. So thank you for that. Okay. Consent agenda, this is the meeting minutes of March 8th, 2022. Is there anything we need to bring up on that to discuss? Can I get a motion to approve the minutes, please?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda for the March 8th, 2020 regular Board of Trustees meeting.
Second. What call, please?
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Yes. Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
And Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes. Okay, action items. Number one, water treatment plant construction manager at risk, CMR contract amendment for the guaranteed maximum price. Mr. Dave Meyer, Bob Gowing.
Bob Gowing, Public Works Director. I'm just gonna say a few brief words before we bring the team up here. But kind of wanted to recap where we've been with this project. We started this project back in 2017 with a different team. You'll recall that Stan Tech was our engineer back then. And since then, we've had numerous milestones, including changing the team up in late 2019 when we selected Jacobs to carry this on through to the end. And Hydro Construction, who is now HP, Hensel Phelps, to handle the CMR portion of the other project. We've had a consent order on request or on consent rather from the state that we've been working under for a good five, four or five years now that requires we get this project done. We've been diligently working towards that. We've brought no less than 12 presentation or action items to the Board of Trustees during that time, all of which have been approved, some with much discussion and some with less discussion. And here we are with what is really the most significant milestone that we could, we could hope for in this project, which is award, potential award of the construction contracts so that we can get this thing under construction and complete by the spring, early summer of 2020. The supply chain issues and all the other issues that we worked through. We think we put together a fantastic team, both on staff and our consultants and contractors. And we're thrilled to present this to you tonight. So with that, I'm gonna go and turn it over to our project manager, Dave Meyer, who's gonna walk us through the rest of the presentation.
Evening. Dave Meyer. Town staff engineer. So first off, a project of this magnitude is much bigger than the person that stands for you at the podium tonight. So therefore, I'm thankfully backed by members of Hensel Phelps, Will Martin, Preston Randall, and Freddie is somewhere back there, Freddie Balladess, and also Al Pecat from Jacobs, who's sitting in for Richard Saxon tonight, who is out of country visiting family. So they'll be able to answer some questions too that I might be able to answer. So this is for the water treatment plant, as Bob mentioned, at long last. This is the phase two construction services guarantee maximum price contract before you. Brief, briefly, the timeline consisted of the 90% design package received from Jacobs on time. In February, immediately, Hensel Phelps went to work on creating their 90% cost estimate. During that period, 90 questions, over 90 questions were asked or asked by Hensel Phelps and responded to by Jacobs. The initial 90% cost came in at 32.7. That included several VE options that were identified by the contractor. Those VE items, those efforts took place immediately with Town Staff, Jacobs and HP to explore those options to reduce prices. As of tonight, we were able to realize $186,000 in VE savings. Other VE items are still under review. Which leads us to the guaranteed maximum price of the contract right now for phase two, If you add the phase one price to that, which is the ozone purchase, the total right now for this project for construction is at 35,299,357,351. I can't read my writing, $357. So there was a cost increase from the 60% to the 90%. Some of those costs were because of refinements, design and specifications that Jacobs did from the 60% level. But the substantial increases by far, as you heard before, for the wastewater treatment plant, material pricing, rebar, metal buildings, piping, electrical equipment. All of that stuff has increased substantially since 60%, which came out last fall, I believe. On top of that, supply chain issues, that's a rough requirements, were also impacts to that price. Davis Bacon wages being one of those. So back in 2021, there were six updates to those wage determinations and three so far this year. And those wage determinations for Davis Bacon establishes the minimum wages that the contractor has to pay through the course of the project. Third bullet there is pretty critical contractor has not been awarded within 90 days after the bid date, which in this case for Hensel Phelps was March 18th. The next Davis Bacon wage termination becomes effective. Most of the time, those do entail an increase to the prices, to the labor rates. So timing is of the essence. Those Davis Bacon wages being locked in for only 90 days after the bid date. More on Davis Bacon wages. I know there were some questions during our work session about the 60% and the 90%. And we've done our best to try to respond to those questions. We ran into some challenges with our subcontractors getting prices. But I'm gonna turn that over to Hensel Phelps Project Manager Preston here to talk more about that. And talk through the slide in front of you right now. Or Will, sorry, Will Martin.
Thanks, Dan. Evening all. Good to be here. This is a quick. Some information that we put together on the changes from the 60 to 90%. As you can see on the left-hand side of each table, there is the 90% wage rate for that specific trade. And that, that wage rate for the 90% milestone is based on the wage determinations you see listed above there. And then 60% same, and that includes the fringe benefits for each trade as well. We've outlined the delta as an hourly, hourly rate increase and then a percent increase for each trade, as you can see there. Overall, many of the trades did not increase, but some of the major trades such as electrical did, as well as some of the structural ironwork and sheet metal work, which would be our HVAC. So overall, there was a, an increase from the 69% wage determinations. As Dave said, there's multiple updates per year. We've had three already this year. And as he also stated, that is locked in from 90 days from the, from the bid date.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Will. A few more slides here. The bid process that Hensel Phelps used is identical to what the other contractor used. You've seen this before. In most cases, three bids were received from subcontractors, most of them pretty close to each other. Indicates that drawings and specs were interpreted consistently. Hensel Phelps did request 60 days for the contractors and material suppliers to hold their prices. Some were able to do that and some were not because of market supply chain volatility issues. So therefore, again, to minimize potential cost escalations and rebidding this. Ideally, Hensel Phelps needs to execute the subcontracts and purchase orders this month. So with the GMP package, we have confirmation on the substantial completion date for the water treatment plant, which is May 6th in 2024. By that time, all processes will be online, handing the keys over to DJ here. Final completion comes in about two and a half months after that. Most of that is punch list items that are completed during the interim and contractor demobilizes after that. Pending board approval tonight, what happens next is the contract signing and notice proceed being issued shortly after that. So once we get that contract executed, Hensel Phelps will proceed to sign contracts with the subcontractors. Issue purchase orders to lock in those prices and mobilizing within the next few weeks. Those remaining VE items and they're in the board package and the GMP package will be vetted over the next few weeks. Anything that's accepted, there was will be a deduct to the price, will be allocated as a cost deduct to the contract price. That could take place in a couple of different formats. We could issue a negative change order should we accept those. Or we can tally that through the course of the project and when we get to final, the final invoices and we can get all of that stuff allocated. And we'll have to figure that internally, how we want to administer those cost deducts. So the contract in front of you is inclusive of what you've seen before to contract, I'm sorry, the contract amendment cover sheet, change order form and GMP package that identifies GMP, $33,576,512. That does include a 10% contingency, 5% for the owner and 5% for the contractor. The supplemental conditions to the general conditions, which were part of the phase one contract are also included in the package. So with that, we are requesting authorization to execute the contract amendment with Hensel Phelps. Not to exceed amount of $33,576,512. That's inclusive of 10% contingencies for phase two construction services. With that, we're turning back to the board and mayor and Stan here for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Hens Phelps. Mayor Pro Temp, can I get questions?
Okay. I read over some of those amendments, not that the standard was supplementary conditions. Were those, I mean, so it looked like just tuning up the language. Were those coming from what generated, was that coming from our side, from? I mean, again, most of it looked like cleaning up language and not a substantial change as far as I could.
Supplemental referring to, right? So we went through the first round of supplemental conditions in phase one. We worked through some things with the contractor, but we didn't finish. The rest of those supplemental conditions came into play after that phase one contract. We knew that those were coming. And coincidentally, we established those for the wastewater treatment plant about a month or two ago. So we've had those established for that plant and we were carrying those through pretty much verbatim for this, for this. In fact, they are verbatim for, from, from the wastewater plant to the water plant. Hensel Phelps did agree to all the terms. The big thing, you're right, trustee Whitehouse is, is dollar amounts for liability insurances, things of that nature were, were, were included in those supplemental conditions. The vast majority of those subs are pretty industry standard languages, going back to the general conditions over history. These items are known to be changed and should be adopted in the supplemental conditions.
Thank you.
No, I appreciate the comments on the value engineering. For those of you who weren't able to attend the working session, we reviewed some of the initial suggestions for value engineering that were just recently received. So it's good to see that those are taken into consideration. We can expect those to continue throughout the project. So if anybody in the audience was concerned about the value engineering status or anything like that, that's, that's kind of how, how it's going there. And I was confident to hear that those are included. So thank you.
Trustee Kenny, some of those were resolved on last Wednesday. There's still a couple that are pending or we're trying to find some more code information to back them up. So they'll continue to work on those items.
Perfect. And I guess that's, that's the point to make is that although some of those may be noted within this contract, that will be an ongoing process to continue looking for opportunities for value engineering throughout the entire project. So those, those tasks don't stop now, but it's, it's fantastic to see progress on already. So thank you.
That's correct, trustee Kenny. And to reiterate, it's not just the VE items that are in the package in front of you. It's through the entire course of the project. It's our job to consider further VE items that might come up.
Trustee Gator.
So I just had a couple of quick questions on the contingency. I know you mentioned there's 5% is the contractor contingency, 5% is the town contingency. Can you break down what is the difference between those two in terms of contractor 5% and town 5%? What does that mean?
So the, the contractor was comfortable in their GMP package and then negotiations that took place after that with a 5% contingency. Right? That's their comfort factor. Town staff felt that we also needed to have another contingency on top of that. So we agreed to a 5% contingency for the owner, right? This is exactly the same thing we did for wastewater plant. We had this exact same contingency amounts and we felt comfortable. Bob, is that pretty much the case behind that?
Does that change anything in terms of approving things that go into the contingency? Or is it basically the contractor said, we feel 5% is enough. Staff felt we needed another 5%. So we're just calling that extra 5% our share, but there's no difference in how it's spent one way or the other.
That's correct. The owner still has the ultimate approval of any contingency dollars.
Okay, perfect. And then the only question I have, I understand working on the VE items and I appreciate that. The question I have is, I know that there were 400,000 plus in potential VE savings and we're still working through those. If we do end up realizing those, will that adjust the GMP? Or is that still going to be the same GMP even if we accept those items?
By terminology, you know, GMP is a number in front of you. But that doesn't mean through the course of the project that dollar amount can't come down as we're working through the project and tapping in the contingency, should those be needed. We are hopeful that through the course of the project and also the VE items that are remaining, we will approve those. We have Jacobs working on those right now. And again, those will be issued as a cost deduct either immediately with a negative change order. Or as I said, at the end of the project, when we come down to the final pay application and tallying everything up.
Okay, so just to clarify though, the, let's just say the total ends up being $400,000. Those funds will not get expended somewhere else in the project, even if we don't officially redo a contract that has a lower GMP. As long as those funds are not spent on those items, they won't get respent anywhere else.
No.
Okay, that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
I have one more item. And the other item that came out of the working session that was requested and included within this presentation, which I think was fantastic, thank you, was regarding the differences and regarding Davis Bacon wages and how those differed from 60% versus 90%. I thought that was illustrated very well in the presentation because that's a significant almost million dollars difference. So I did want to draw attention to that if anybody did have concerns regarding those changes and how it was displayed here just showing and reflecting the different wage amounts. So thank you.
Yeah, if we'd have been 60 days ahead, we'd have saved a million bucks. That's what it comes down to, right? Pretty much. So we really can't.
Look at it that way, sure.
Yeah, we clearly can't mess around much anymore. It's gonna just go up and up. I don't have anything more to say. I think we've looked at this long enough. So let's go ahead and open up to the public. Open up the public this time. If you want to come up, please state your name, address and that sort of thing at the podium. Let's hear what you got to say. Let's see if we can't answer. Okay, we'll bring it back to the board. If I have no further comments, I'd like to seek a motion to approve the CMR contract guaranteed maximum price to Hensel Phelps.
I make a motion to authorize execution of the contract amendment with Hensel Phelps Construction, Inc. And the amount not to exceed $33,576,512, which includes a 10% contingency, 5% for the contractor, 5% for the owner for the phase two construction services on the water treatment plant expansion.
Second.
Well said. Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Temp Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes, well done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, move on. Item two, resolution 13-2022, it's resolution approved mandatory water restrictions. Hallie Sheldon, Senior Management Analyst.
Good evening, Mayor and Board of Trustees. Before you tonight is a resolution adopting water restrictions for the months of May through October. This should look pretty similar. It's almost the identical resolution that was passed in 2020 as well as 2021. These mandatory restrictions would restrict watering between 7:00 PM and 8:00 AM and goes into details about even addresses versus odd addresses and how we split up those days. With a little bit of history, so these mandatory restrictions have been in place during the months of May through October since 2020. In 2020, staff had a realization of capacity impact due to COVID-19 stay-at-home orders. We had a significant increase in our capacity of our plant because we had people staying home. And when outdoor watering restriction, when outdoor watering started, we saw a severe increase in the capacity of our plants. So this is when our risk analysis really started as staff in terms of the impact of outdoor watering on our plant capacity. Board trustees adopted those outdoor watering restrictions in 2020 to help us predict those peak demand hours. And we saw again in 2021 the need for that as well. I'm gonna have our public works team come up here in a second to talk a little bit about capacity and what that looks like and the volatility of that. But there are a couple other items I wanted to highlight about why this resolution is before you tonight. We've heard from our residents that the inconsistency of direction on watering restrictions has been frustrating. A lot of times we were being reactive as opposed to proactive. And so our goal with bringing this to you tonight is that we could be proactive in communicating the expectations of outdoor watering this year. We can bring that to our water bill in May, which we need to provide. Supplement those, 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 those items to our vendor to actually get that in the, in the water bill for May by April 25th, which is why it's before you tonight. So if we do decide to move forward with outdoor watering restrictions, that communication can be very clear from the moment they get their first bill in May. Another concern that we've heard from residents is about HOA fines in terms of watering restrictions. We did have our town attorney look into the Colorado revised statutes that shows the, the section that protects residents if they are going to be following outdoor water restrictions and their lawns do not meet their HOA codes. They are protected as long as they're in compliance with the watering restrictions in place by the town. I am gonna ask Deputy Public Works Director Megan Smith to come up here to speak on the capacity of the plant.
Good evening, Board. Megan Smith, Deputy Director, Public Works. Let me just share my screen really quick. We did pull together a presentation to show you this evening, just to kind of remind you our reasoning and the concerns that we have around capacity at our treatment facility. Why is this not working? There we go. So just a little bit of background. We do have probably about half of our water customers are, do use treated or potable water for their outdoor irrigation needs. That does mean about half are on a non-potable system, which is pretty fantastic for our region of the state and the size of our community. That's actually not super, super common for the size of our community, which is wonderful and we should be proud of that. However, about, I would say irrigation demand accounts for in the summer months, about half of the water demand, the potable water demand that is placed on our treatment facility. Current plant expansion that we just approved this evening, it's, it's gonna be a lot of successive connected presentations tonight. But we'll expand that treatment capacity from about two point, from 2.3 million gallons per day up to 4.2 million gallons per day. So that with the execution and completion of that expansion, we will be, we will be in a different position in a couple of years than we are right now. But the existing plants will be pushed very hard for the next couple of years. They're close to their maximum capacity and I'll touch on that a little bit more detail. And that can potentially cause some pretty serious frustrations and issues at the plant, stress and potential failure of existing aging equipment that's in that current facility, with the very risky possible inability to serve customers during that peak daily demand timeframe. I do want to point out really quick, I apologize, I should have said that before I got started. This is not in your packet this evening. This presentation will be provided to you though and amended to the packet for the public. I apologize, I should have said that upfront, not to confuse folks at home too. So back, back to it, I apologize. So this is just, this is our production numbers and I believe that you guys do receive this information in other forms or at other times, but this looks at the last five years of monthly production numbers. In million gallons is the, the Y-axis there on the left. And you can see there in the middle, those middle months, June, July, August, September, where you really see that increase in production need in order to meet demand. You can also see there in 2020, what Hallie referenced, when we all came home. That was also a warm year, but people started, I know I- That was also a warm year, but people started, I know I planted a garden that year that I had never done before. So I think I was one of, one of many. But that is something that we are with trying to be proactive and coming to you ahead of time and not being reactive that we can get these restrictions in place in advance of that, of folks turning on the irrigation system so they know what to anticipate. There are some pretty serious operational risks that we see and why we are trying to be proactive with this. You know, and again, those experiences in 2020 are very fresh in our operators and our superintendent's memory. The time that was, had to be spent out there, the stress, I can't imagine. I wasn't here during that time. And I, I hope we don't relive those exact experiences, but I know it will still be tricky this summer. Just as a note, so you can kind of see some comparisons, we did have a less hot and dry summer in '21 as compared to 2020. And we do see that that our max daily production fell in June that year, which is a little early. We did have another really high one in July, but this June one still beat it out. 2.2 million gallons per day compared to 2.5 MGD in July of 2020. And just as a reference, we don't typically, so we have several plants, you all are aware, we have essentially four separate types of water treatment plants. The microfiltration plant that is at the main facility is typically not in use in the summer as it doesn't do a very good job with taste and odor control. So when you remove that, we're really looking at about 2.55 MGD as max capacity. So you can see that we got really close in 2020 and closer than, than we'd like to be. That's very stressful and it's hard on our system. Again, touching on that, that aging equipment at, at the conventional treatment facility. And then knowing that we have a lack of redundancy in our source supply and our treatment and connections in our distribution system. And then beyond that, just the knowledge that we're always planning and having to assure that we have adequate supply available through whatever weather pattern comes our way. And as a water resources engineer, my first case estimate is to go to the dire drought situation because you, it'll, can turn on a dime. So I've already been looking at the National Weather Service Climate Prediction Center for their general three-month seasonal outlook, which they already have posting through the end of June. And we are looking at the likelihood of above normal temperatures and below normal precipitation through that time period. This is a really standard meteorological forecasting that is utilized by, you know, wat- water resources professionals across the nation, not just here in Colorado. And just as a snippet, so you can kind of see what that looks like. We are definitely looking at pretty, really high chance or a relatively high chance of, of well above normal temperatures. And then slightly less high chance of, of, of limited precipitation, but high temperatures, less supply is a double whammy on it both increases demand and reduces available supply. And it kind of squeezes us from both sides. So those watering restrictions are, are our mechanism to be able to be proactive in that planning for the year. So with that, I'm going to turn it back to Hallie.
Questions this side?
So I did have a couple of questions. One, I did note under violations, maybe this was in there before. But it says, the property of any user violating this provision shall be subject to utility service termination. Not may, shall typically means if you violate it, we shut off your water is what that reads to me. So I don't know if that's needs to be changed to a may because I know we usually have a warnings and all that. But the saying which does say shall be terminated.
This is, this is the same language that's been in the previous ones. And what it's saying is shall be, shall be subject to utility service termination, which is a process of the town. So it's not saying shall be terminated, but shall be subject to utility service termination. That's a, we can change the language on that potentially if that concerns you.
It does. And I understand that it hasn't been our process. We've never shut. I don't think we've even given anyone a fine yet, which is great, but I just, again, if we can change it to word it so that it was very clear that, hey, if you violate this, you will go into our process. And then that could end with termination. I don't know what that looks like, but that was just something that caught my eye.
Yeah, and as you said, in 2021, no cases regarding this came through municipal court. There's no fines, but I can draft up a minor amendment to that language if it makes you more comfortable.
In terms of the restrictions themselves, the only concern that I have is kind of been what I've shared in the prior, previous years is just that I really would prefer to see us go a route of, we talk all the time about working together in a partnership with the residents and with the community. And instead of just going straight to making it mandatory, and I understand we've had voluntary water restrictions in place for years that really be nothing, but basically same restrictions, but tell the residents, we want this, we want to work with you. We want to have an opportunity to say, hey, work with us here. And then if, you know, in, in 30 days, if they're not working with us, then we make it mandatory at that point. But beyond that, those are my only thoughts. The restrictions, I appreciate that we have the things in place for new yards, for gardens. So people can do those, which were issues. I know we've got the expanded hours to help with some people's concerns with that last in the previous. So that's good. So that really my only concern is I prefer to start from a work with us. And if people don't work with us, then we go to mandatory, but that's it. And then the change with the wording on the subject termination.
Last year, I do want to give kudos to the town staff because they did approach us early on in the season as well to make sure that we were able to start communicating the restrictions prior to the actual restrictions being functional. So I think this year we're getting even bigger jump on that. So I really appreciate it because a concern in the past was that we would then adopt the mandatory restrictions, but not have a significant amount of time to communicate that. So the thought and effort to make sure that can get into the water bill, I think is, I really appreciate that. And I'm sure everybody who would be learning about this would appreciate that. So thank you for the timing. The second piece was the reason why in the past, and I've been a fan of it, of it being mandatory restrictions is because it is a whole community effort. And within this presentation, it does mention the maximum gallons per day. But we're also talking about maximum per any given interval of every single day. So the production within 6:00 to 7:00 PM or 7:00 to 8:00 PM. And that's why the timing and requirements of timing for the outdoor and that significant use is so important. So it's not only the maximum per day, but it's a maximum on any given hour of any given day. So encouraging the, that high water usage for outdoor irrigation during those off-peak hours is why that is so important to ensuring that every household and business in our community has reliable water. So the significance of that is huge. And I think that's why if we were to indicate it as a mandatory requirement, it passes along that significance and importance. And generally, when that's the case, that's, it's worth a little bit more thought and effort. So I do appreciate, and I can't wait to hear about the HOA considerations. I'd like to hear more about that. A couple of HOAs have reached out to me and they've asked, hey, we want to get ahead of this. How would you recommend that we redo our landscape requirements? And I go, fantastic that you asked that. We happen to have a guide available to you. So I provided them links and information on the new recommendations for landscape requirements so that they could potentially use those as their HOA requirements that match the low water-wise considerations in plants for their landscaping. So fantastic. And thank you to those HOAs being proactive. And then the other piece too is last year, as part of this whole initiative for water conservation, we brought in CSU, who did a presentation on irrigation. And they provided a ton of best practices and how to have a beautiful, lush, amazing yard, even if it is standard turf within those water restrictions adequately with best practices and appropriate irrigation techniques. So I have no doubt that we'll continue spreading those best practices and help people have beautiful landscaping. Because even within these requirements, everyone can and have a beautiful green lawn. So it just takes a little bit of best practices and I think we can spread that word. So. But thank you again for the timing. Look forward to the HOA information. And then I appreciate that it is encouraged as a, or within this anyway, asking for a mandatory restriction. Also, in the future, I think we should maybe consider adopting this as an ordinance so we don't have to do this year round because water problems are not going away in the entire state of Colorado or anywhere in Northern Colorado. So it might be nice to get people to know what to expect through an ordinance of every year potentially. So I don't know how that would read or what, but something to consider. And I know that's been thought for, by some other people too. Thanks.
I would be supportive of passing the mandatory restrictions at this point. And I haven't taken a water class at CSU and apparently Colorado is entering the driest period in 1,200 years. Lake Mead and Lake Powell are, they go down to the 35 meters, you're going to lose hydroelectric generation capacity for millions of people. I mean, what we're seeing here to cross this entire region and then cross the entire basin. Yeah, I mean, the water, we gotta, we do a lot of with water conservation stuff. I mean, because what happens if we pass peak demand? Town goes into a boil order, right? You gotta boil everything or buy drinking water, showering, bathing, the whole nine yards. I mean, we're, we're right, right, right at that edge. And when you run an old piece of equipment at close to 100% capacity, something goes wrong. So, I mean, I think we, we're all going to have to do this. It's, I think this is the way going forward. There is no going back from everything that I've seen. So again, I'm supportive of passing this.
I agree with the timing and the mandatory requirement. It's probably just a good practice. Get everybody started on it. I mean, you can start out your system with this practice and it actually helps your lawn behave better throughout the dry period. So I think it's, it's required now and it's good practice to start.
Thanks for bringing it forward. This has been going on for the last couple of years. It's not, it's not a surprise. I follow water restrictions. My lawn's green. I'm on McCollum Road. Come by and see it. One thing I'd like to say is though, we should be following this ourselves in the parks out there now. I brought it up several times that the sprinklers are going at 1 o'clock during the day. Now, if it's on a non-potable system, does that change the game? I don't know. But we need to let them know that. Then the citizens know that. Don't worry about that. That's non-potable. That's not you. You know, I don't know, but you know, but I've seen it several times right down the road from where I live. And it happens. So we need to, we need to make sure we're following the law too. Okay. And I think mandatory, if you don't say mandatory, you know, people are probably less likely to see it as that important. Because it's very important. You lose pressure into town and you're going to feel it. So I'm, I'm all for it. It's, nothing's changed, nothing new. We got through this one. Two more years, be able to buy as much more as you want. Okay? Is that it? Other comment?
I don't have, just about watering outside or mandatory watering? Okay. So Karen Ayford, I live in the Knowles. I was just going to kind of expand on what the mayor just said is that through 2020 and 2021, if you look at any of our social media, everybody's ticked off because they said, okay, you have to follow these water restrictions. And then there's parks that we're watering in the middle of the day, those businesses that we're watering in the middle of the day. It should be the same for everyone. So I guess what I would like to bring to, I'm sorry, what's your name? Hallie? Okay, Hallie is, can you bring this forth in a manner that would also hold businesses and parks and wrecks accountable, not just the town residents? Because I really feel like the way it's brought forward is, this is the hammer down on the residents. But where's the hammer down on the businesses and hammer down on the parks and rec and, and all areas? So I would just like to challenge you to maybe find a way that you can share with the town how the businesses, parks and rec and other areas of the town will be held at the same accountability level as it is with the language that John was bringing up where it said, if, if you don't do it, you can lose a risk of having your utilities for that area. I think that should be the same for the businesses and parks and rec and whatever, all the parts of the town. Sorry, I don't know everything, but it should be the same across the board. It's not just the residents. There's lots of other things here too, and they should be held to the exact same accountability. Thanks.
Thank you, Karen.
Sherelle Teets, 4525 Ingalls Drive. I would like to please suggest when you guys are looking at making the information flyer that you put in some information about soil erosion control for those in areas that are in new subdivisions that have already planted grass. And then when they're not planting, not seeding because of some watering restrictions, the wind starts blowing and all of the grass that these new homeowners have bought, put in already becomes completely covered in the soils from the erosion and wind. So maybe it's suggestive, you can buy them their little barriers that you can put up around the edges of your yard. Maybe ask if builders can help leave some of those erosion, erosion barriers up at closing to kind of keep that dust and soil down. I also want to make sure that the raw water tap users are not going to be affected by the watering restrictions, those that are right outside of town that actually rely on the water to have drinking water in their homes already. And also want to know if this is going to apply to pulling water out of hydrants for builders to water down soil and development. Because if we're really saying we need to restrict water, we need to encourage builders to be hauling in water and not pulling from our hydrants.
Thank you, Sherelle. Congratulations.
Thank you. I'm very excited. I'm excited to work with everyone.
You're going to get to do all that.
I know.
Okay. Anyone else?
Lisa Cholet again. I would just encourage you to definitely make this mandatory while I appreciate the power of choice and hoping people do well. I have five kids. It doesn't always work out. In this case, water is a finite resource. So even when we aren't at capacity anymore, we can't go buy more water from another planet or something like that. This is all the water we have. And as far as HOAs go, in Wellington Downs, we have a water restriction and we're on non-potable water. And yet we can only add water before 8:00 AM and after 11:00 PM at night and only twice a week. And my grass is always green. So it's very possible, I think that it would be irresponsible as a town to lift a watering restriction. And like Troy said, I would, or Mayor Hammond, sorry, no disrespect. The town needs to be the leader on that and we really aren't at all. So that's all I have to say.
Anyone else? Karen, bring it back to the board. Final comments?
So I know in years past, we did put a moratorium on construction water. Are we doing that again with pulling water out of hydrants to help with the plant capacity issues?
Yeah, Bob, what are we going to do with that? We're going to follow suit like we've been doing.
And then also I know, I don't know if we have a permanent ban on construction water at the bulk water station. But also are we addressing, going to do similar things this year?
Well, we're basically going to do the same thing this year that we did last year, which was consider requests for hydrant meter when it comes in. And we've also been very proactive with the builders and there's some conditions to that hydrant meter about when they can draw. And as Trustee Kenny pointed out earlier, it's not just the total amount that's drawn, it's the time of day that is drawn. So we've worked with them to draw early or draw late so it doesn't coincide with other peak demand in town. We have and retain the option to pull those hydrant meters if we need to. There are meters, so we can go and rescind that permit and go get them whenever we want. In fact, we did that in 2020. It caused quite an uproar and some, some consternation out there, but we did it anyway. We hope that we don't have to do that. But we certainly have the ability to do that if we need to. And the same, same goes for bulk water. We can, we've restricted the hours, as you might recall, and the, the concept is the same to stagger those draws so they don't coincide with indoor domestic use and/or your outdoor irrigation use as well. So we'll be monitoring all those things as we go. And we really don't feel like we want to tie our hands in any particular manner because it's our job to make sure our pipes stay wet and we can deliver water to our customers continuously. because it's our job to make sure our pipes stay wet and we can deliver water to our customers continuously.
Okay.
All the time. Does that answer your question?
I think it does. So I thought we had done away with the meters last year, but we, we did not. I know in twenty twenty, I thought we had also done last year, we'd said no. So my concerns are, one, I know staff is concerned about the high school coming on this year. We've obviously had new homes from last year, new homes coming at the beginning of this year. Um, my question is, is why we wouldn't just say no to that? Since we're, I mean, we're restricting our residents' usage, why would we continue to let builders pull water from our hydrants at all?
Well, I think another thing to take note of is that we're, we're also encouraging builders to use not their own non-pot systems. There really are no um, subdivisions on the construction right now that don't have a non-pot system. So in the new subdivision down towards the south on the, on the west side, they have a purple hydrant. You'll see a purple hydrant out there that's connected to their non-pot and that's where they draw most of their water from. The water that they need, the, the better quality water, they may need for mixing concrete and certain kind of limited uses. And uh, again, we have that option to, to pull those meters and terminate that program at any time. We do believe that contractors are our customer, they're building houses for future residents. So um, we look at them as part of our customer base, so we're trying to be respectful of their needs, the same way we're respectful of everybody's needs.
Okay. It sounds like we can, but we're not currently planning to pull them unless we need to.
Right. Okay.
Anyone else? No? Any other comments?
Yeah, I do have comments. And this is the resolution for the town of Wellington. So these items would only apply to folks who are using, are in the town of Wellington using our utility. So um, I, I did wanna answer that question that came up earlier. Uh, the other thing is, and I know this is gonna come up and it's gonna be on social media, I promise you, is that uh, the outdoor watering for the new middle school, high school is a non-pot system. And I guarantee you with new grass, new fields, that kind of stuff, we're gonna see sprinklers probably certain times. So I just want everyone to be aware that that is the agreement purposely part of it. And that's how it was intended and planned so that they are watering, using a non-pot system outside. So um, I do wanna acknowledge last year too, there were a couple scenarios where the town had sprinklers running in the middle of the day and it was part of a testing process because uh, for maintenance on sprinkler heads and those areas have a significant number of circular heads, so it took a long time. And so um, the consideration was, and people who saw that, that there was, we were watering just in the middle of the day for no reason. So, and uh, that did come up in a meeting and the intention moving forward was to be more cautious and aware, communicate better and limit that maintenance period so that, that for one thing, the perception is better and less water used in the middle of the day for less waste. So I do wanna acknowledge those, those few things because those did come up. Um, and they were acknowledged in other meetings, just in case everybody wasn't here at those times. Um, but I think it's great that it came up again, cause it is important and a good, a good reminder. But I think those were my only two items in response to public comment.
Anything?
No, sir.
Anything? Okay, let's just make sure we get the word out. If we got testing going on, if we doing something that's not random. Okay, so if that's that.
A quick question first, Patty.
One more?
Did we, I know we discussed moving parks to watering in the hours that we have for everything else. Did they switch that over so that we will now water regardless of potable and non-potable during the same hours that we're expecting of residents?
That is the plan, it based on programming at the parks, so that is the plan.
And I know we'd also talked about just like getting like a yard sign or something that says, do we have those? Great.
I don't know if we have them yet, but it is some, it is something that we had planned for the summer.
So they can throw it out in the lawn, so when they see the sprinklers going off at one, they see a sign that says, testing system.
And, and we don't want any kids drinking the non-potable water. You know, it's just not a good idea.
Okay, I've got no other questions, can I, or comments? Can I get a motion to approve resolution thirteen dash twenty-two?
I make a motion to approve resolution thirteen dash twenty-two, uh, resolution approving mandatory watering restrictions for this season.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee White House?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes. Uh, next item three, resolution number fourteen dash twenty-two. It's resolution finding substantial completion compliance of an annexation petition and establishing the date, time and place for a public hearing. Cody Bird.
Evening, Mayor and Board. Cody Bird, Planning Director. Um, this particular item might look familiar and I'm gonna explain why. Um, but first of all, it's a, a request, we've received a, a petition from the property owner at seventy-eight forty, Sixth Street. Um, this is the, the small uh, red building south of the uh, the hotel on the west side of Sixth Street. The request was to annex that property into the town of Wellington uh, for development purposes. The town heard this request about two years ago and went through the, the proceedings, went through the procedure and did in fact approve that annexation. The, one of the conditions of annexation is you have to file an annexation map with the county identifying the property boundaries that it is in fact brought into the municipality. And we did not receive the signed executed annexation map or the street dedications for that property. And so the, the prior proceeding uh, has become null and void. Um, and so this is, if I can use an, an unprofessional term, a do-over. Um, there's, nothing has significantly changed on the property. The request is identical, the property boundary is the same. And so what we're proposing is, is we've again received the petition from the property owner um, to pursue annexation into the town of Wellington to allow development of that site or redevelopment of that site. Um, and in accordance with the state statutes, the annexation proceedings for a municipality to bring a property into the town limits is a very regimented um, process that we, that we follow. The first step in that process is the action that's been presented to the board tonight. And it's a finding of substantial compliance, meaning that the property, that the property owner is requesting be brought into the town meets all of the statutory requirements for eligibility. Um, in this case, the, the leading requirement is that at least one-sixth of the property boundary is contiguous with the town. And this property is completely surrounded by the town. It's what's referred to as an enclave. It's, the town is annexed property all the way around it, so it's kind of an island. Um, so, and the other tests are that it, there's a community of interest between the property and the, and the municipality. Um, and in this case, I think for obvious reasons, they're gonna request utilities um, for development of the property, redevelopment of the property. Um, and we can provide those utilities. Um, so there's, the step tonight is simply acknowledging that the owner has petitioned, asking the town to annex the property, that the property is eligible, which it is. Um, and the resolution also establishes the date for a public hearing. Public hearing is a, a subsequent step in the annexation procedure process. Um, we have to conduct that, we have to conduct it within thirty to sixty days from adoption of a resolution, starting the proceedings. And the only, if this is adopted tonight, the only meeting, only regular meeting of the Board of Trustees within that time period is the May twenty-fourth, um, double check that date.
Correct.
Yes, May twenty-fourth, um, regular meeting for the Board of Trustees. So the resolution in your packet tonight is a proposal to determine that, that the property is eligible for annexation, that the application and petition is substantially um, compliant with state statutes. And it sets the date for the public hearing to be held here at the Leaper Center uh, at six-thirty on May twenty-fourth. I'm happy to answer any questions on the annexation uh, resolution before you or the annexation process.
Mayor Pro Tem, you got anything? Nope. That's the White House.
No, sir.
Mr. Kenny? Trustee Gator?
I did have a question. Do we have the representative from the owner here tonight or?
There, there's one person here representing the, the contract purchaser for the property. Um, and if, and they're here tonight, if they'd like to hear from them.
Yeah, I just, uh, the question I had is, I know this did come before us and I, if I recall correctly, we had several extensions and been a long process going through that, and then it eventually timed out. Has the owner addressed or figured out what those issues were so that we don't kind of wind up going through the same thing again? Um, I, I don't know if they can speak to that or not.
They, they probably could, but I, I can answer that question as well. Um, from the standpoint that the, as I understand it, the contract purchaser now was not involved in the prior request.
Okay.
That's a, a new component. They can correct me if I'm wrong on that.
Okay.
Um, thank you. I, I heard them say that was correct.
Okay.
Um, and so the, and I can tell you that, that the, the challenge is with getting documents signed into the town is being remedied. The contract purchaser has already taken the steps to get all the documents lined up. They would still need signatures, but we've been communicating with the contract purchaser on what that requirement would be.
Okay. I just wanna make sure we're not running a route again and two years from now doing the same thing again.
Understood. Much appreciated too.
Everybody's good. Other comment? Anybody like to come up and talk about this? Don't go too far, Cody.
I was just gonna get out of the way, but I don't see anyone coming.
Bring it back to the board then, please. Um, if there's no other comments, can I get a motion to approve resolution number fourteen dash twenty-two, finding substantial compliance of an annexation petition and establishing the date, time and place for a public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee White House?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Don't go too far. Item four, resolution number fifteen dash twenty-two. This is a resolution acknowledging public comments relating to zoning designations for residential properties along Harrison Avenue, McKinley Avenue. I think this is a follow-up to a request that we had getting through all that, right?
It is, yeah. Um, and again, Cody Bird, Planning Director. Um, the staff memo on this one was really short, didn't wanna overdo it. Um, but the, the background here explains that um, throughout the comprehensive plan adoption process that the Planning Commission did and the land use code adoption process that the Planning Commission and the Board of Trustees went through, there were public comments that were made uh, from residents of the community and particularly um, in the downtown core area of the downtown neighborhoods along Harrison and McKinley, suggesting and requesting that, that those corridors uh, be zoned as a, as residential properties. Um, for just a little bit more context there, when we started the comprehensive plan process, one of the recommendations in the Planning Commission had encouraged um, considering those uh, two corridors to allow for expansion of business uses. Um, the existing zoning maps identified those as transitional properties and the transitional intent as defined in the code was to uh, allow uh, properties that are a mix of residential and commercial uses to be allowed to continue to convert to commercial uses over time. Um, throughout those processes, we heard feedback from residents uh, saying that that wasn't really what they desired. Um, and so we changed the recommendations in the comprehensive plan to address those comments. Uh, we made changes in the, the land use code um, to better protect the, the residential character and historical nature of those corridors. And when we got to the Board of Trustees for that final adoption, the request was made that we know there's one more step in this long process for um, the last step being uh, updating the official zoning map of the town where it applies the, the new zoning standards to properties. And a few of those would change because the transitional zone district um, is eliminated under the new land use code. Um, it's no longer a district, so they would have to have a new district designation. What we heard from the Board of Trustees was a request to acknowledge those comments from the public requesting that residential zoning for um, residential properties on Harrison and McKinley Avenue. And the request was to bring back a resolution um, stating that, that desire of the board to acknowledge that uh, those comments and that desire for residential zoning. So the draft resolution in your packet tonight was prepared based on that board request. Um, and we, it's got some of the background that I just described, identified in the recitals. And then it, at the end, it acknowledges that, that that was the, the consideration of the Board of Trustees at the time and the desire to make that statement very clear that that was the desire of the Board of Trustees to consider that zoning um, of those properties in a future process.
Okay.
The side.
Sure. So thank you very much for putting this together. I know I was originally one that came up with this idea. So I just wanted to make sure, I'm very clear to understanding, this does not commit the future board to any action. It simply communicates to them, this is what we heard from the residents through the process and this was really where we think would be the best to acknowledge that. So this then moves forward and that new board, when they are faced with those zoning, will be able to look at that resolution and they'll make a determination at that time as to whether they do residential or they may choose to do something else. But this is just us saying this was what we came away with and we wanted to share it with you.
I feel like I'm always odd duck on, on some of these things, but I have to bring up some public comment I received and some people who reached out to me. So within two blocks on Harrison Avenue, four properties, or people representing those properties have reached out to me and have wondered if they could pursue opportunities to use their properties for commercial uses. Um, so, and they have no intents or plans or anything in the works uh, at this point, but they said that that's really something that they wanna keep their minds open to if there was an opportunity to doing that. So, I mean, of the tenish houses, um, four of them have contacted me. Um, and not saying for sure, we wanna do a commercial property or we wanna pursue commercial property, but they wanted to make sure that they understood the process of, of what that looks like and how it works. So I explained to them how the zoning map, um, that was the next kind of item that's coming up and that's gonna determine where those zone districts that have been defined would be assigned, right? Um, so that was, the reason why I explained it that way is that's because it's, that's how it's written and that's the current process within our town. Um, what I worry about doing a resolution like this is us essentially promising, but not promising, but promising that we're gonna do something, but with no intent of saying that's what has to happen. And for me, and it seems like a, it's, seems like that's not, I, I mean, we're, essentially we brought this forth saying, these are the words we've heard. And so we have intention of keeping our word, right? But just so you know, we don't have to. But we're gonna, we're gonna do the resolution anyway. So I, I just don't feel like that's productive, to be completely honest, because we already have a process in place. And part of that process is public hearings in which every single property owner is contacted. Every property owner within a certain radius of that property that could be affected is contacted. And that gives them the opportunity to speak on behalf of their own property. We have heard from a lot of residents downtown. Um, but the, the lists and lists of residents that we received, um, signatures from, for example, they don't all live on Harrison and McKinley. So what I wanna say though, is I hear the concern, I understand the intention. I live on Harrison in a residence in my own home, which I intend to keep as a residence. So um, but what I'm saying is if my next door neighbor has different intentions and there's a process in place for them to pursue other options, I can't tell them what to do. We already have current processes within our town to manage that. So uh, I would hate to do a resolution to promise to do something that we're not actually promising to do. I, I just, I don't see the reason why to do that and I think it kinda goes against and doesn't explain the actual processes within our community. And I don't think it's fair to do without actually contacting every property owner on those streets. Secondly, that was the first part. Sorry, I have two. The other part is if you look at our current zoning map, um, that's up here on the wall. I'm gonna just go up there and point out the two streets that we're talking about. Okay.
Here's Cleveland, here's Harrison, and here's McKinley. You can see right now that there are one, two, three, four, five colors.
Five current colors on Harrison right now, meaning only one of those is current residential, essentially. And there's other, other zoning there too. So people on Harrison currently have properties that are zoned commercial, for example. And the intent is to use our properties for commercial. So if we were to go then write a resolution saying that our intent is that those two streets are to be zoned residential, that is essentially telling people who already have their properties that are zoned commercial that we intend on having it be residential without contacting them, without having a public hearing, without any communication specifically with them, saying that we have an intent to change their zoning. I, I can't get behind that. That's not fair to those property owners who intend to use those properties for commercial. So I understand the intent, I understand what the want is to keep the, the streets looking residential and having a home feeling and, and all those kind of things. But this involves a lot of properties that we haven't reached out to. Um, and there's a process that includes public hearings for these things and we need to contact and contact them appropriately. So I'm not, I'm not a fan of this, although I totally understand and I, I really hate it cause I'm gonna get misquoted over and over and over again after this. So I wanna be So I want to be very clear. The homes on Harrison and McKinley, I hope that they can be and thrive as beautiful downtown historical homes forever of Wellington. I love that for them. I bought a hundred and ten year old house for that reason on Harrison. So if anybody says that I want to take anybody's home away from them, that is wrong. I did not say that. But what I did say is that every product property owner needs to be contacted if we have make a resolution to change or intent for their property. It's not fair to do that over encompassing.
Interesting points. So Mr. Bird, I mean, I know the next step in this process, comp plan, land use code. Is actually applying changes to. The actual land use map. Now, my understanding is the process is you would go forward and you would contact people in these areas and say, well, this is what. The town is suggesting, not telling you, but. Based on adjacency, this seems to make a reasonable sense. But if that property owner said, well, I want to be zoned and maybe in this particular area. As a C two commercial. Is there, that's where the process really begins, is that, is that correct? That that has always been reserved for the property owner. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct. And as another trustee pointed out a minute ago, there's there are other processes in place to request a zone change. To change the the designation for your property and what uses are allowed there. But to the 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 question for next steps. We'll be presenting information to the planning commission, taking the existing zoning map. Primarily, again, those transitional zone districts that will be going away because that district doesn't exist under the new land use code. Will take a first, you know, draft map and highlight, these are the properties that we're proposing a different zoning for. And let the planning commission weigh in on that and make a recommendation to staff. And then we'll send letters to those property owners that are impacted with, you know, just a kind of factual statement. Your property is within this zone. Your current zoning is this, this is the. I the zoning that was identified as being from from town staff and planning commission standpoint as the most appropriate zone district. If you'd like to consider a different zone district, contact staff and we'll put our information in there to allow that that discussion to happen. We expect that that conversation will happen with a number of property owners. And so we're open to having that conversation. Staff will then take the feedback that we receive from the property owners in those conversations back to the planning commission, who will then. Receive that information and make a final recommendation on the zoning map. And then that final recommendation will come to the board of trustees for final action. So that that's the procedural steps that we follow for updating the official zoning map. Any questions on those steps?
I don't have a question about that, but then I have, I mean, that was my understanding. I wanted to make sure that that was clarified. So if by, I mean, I I think what this is trying to do is really recognize. Some people, the 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 folks who lived down there who felt very strongly about this, and this was something we went back and forth quite a bit on. And I think we got to a good compromise. But but by saying that this is designated as R four does not in any way take away anyone else's right to say, I want to put up a hair salon. And I don't know what the business would be, though. So they're not necessarily mutually exclusive to say this. So I I I was, I just want to understand if if I'm thinking about it correctly or if I've missed something.
Yeah, I I think you've identified a good path and there there are opportunities for individual property owners to respond to town staff. And the planning commission, the second time the planning commission meets for the zoning map would be a scheduled public hearing. So those individuals could also come and speak to the planning commission and the board of trustees would be a public hearing as well. But so there are opportunities for feedback, for suggestions, for conversations. This is what I'm thinking. What can I do with this zoning? What can I do with that zoning? What are the pros and cons? I'm happy to have those conversations with any property owner along this corridor. So there's plenty of opportunities for dialogue. And at the end of the day, it's a planning commission recommendation based on that feedback and a board of trustees, a public hearing and final, final decision on updating the official zoning map.
Thank you.
So I think there's two remaining board members that'll be on this board and. The incoming board members and mayor are have been involved in all those conversations are fully in. Understanding of what the public comments have been so far. And I think we should just leave it up to the future boards and future public comment to address this concern.
Wait a minute, you want to, you want to move to? Do what with it? Do nothing with?
I don't think we should do anything with it.
So when I read staff recommendations here, it just, this is what this thing says. We're just acknowledging public comments relating to zoning designation for the residential properties along Harrison Avenue McKinley Avenue. That's it. That's all it says. Just acknowledging public comments. What's that mean?
We, that's.
We read them?
I think that's exactly what it means. Public comments were received that expressed a desire for the R four zoning. If there's different language that you'd like to see in that resolution, we're certainly open to that. This was staff's draft based on the request that we heard it at a prior meeting to bring forth a resolution. If it needs to change, that's something we can certainly discuss.
Yeah, but that zoning map exercise is going to come up. That's where you're going to be doing your zoning districts and, you know. Right? I mean, it's definitely going to happen.
Yeah, the the areas specifically in question there that like the highest priority is so the ones that are shown in that like purple color. So you can see those ones. Those are transitional. That that doesn't exist anymore. So those obviously would have to be assigned. Something.
Right.
Yeah. So that's, that'll be my guess is that the the first priority of the zoning district.
Logically, and they're they're typically all houses right now, I think.
Yeah.
Well, this is what we left with when we left the last meeting. We were going to do something and just to give the good faith. It was about good faith. That's all. We've beaten this thing up. It's about good faith and then the next board and right? I mean, it's.
And I have that good faith. I've heard those words and I I hear them and I understand them. That's the good faith. But to then. Then to. Like allocate that to properties that haven't been represented. I don't think it's right to do.
That's. They had the opportunity to, I mean, I thought everybody had the opportunity to come up here. This is not done, obviously.
There was significant, there was significant feedback from downtown neighborhoods wanting to continue. The downtown look and feel, the historical view of downtown. And those those were significantly inputted to and changed for the language of the districts and in the con plan. So there was a ton of changes that have already acknowledged that voice. And I and I understand that it's still a concern and question. I'm not underestimating that whatsoever. And and I think I I hear and I feel it, so I understand what that need and want is. But this also then relates to other people's properties that didn't say those things and have said exactly opposite to me. So I I can't speak on behalf of all the residents saying that this is a resolution that should happen for two entire streets. When some said wants to see one, wants to see one right now. And if we pass a resolution saying. The people want it to be residential and they're making this business plans on their C one, I think that would be scary. I don't think that's, I don't think that'd be great for redevelopment or selling a property that's zone C one if we write it, do a resolution saying that we intend to change it to downtown residential.
Trustee Gator.
Yeah, so I do want to clarify a couple of things. So I know it's been said that we're promising, not promising. This is not promising anything. I think what the mayor said is exactly what this is. This is about good faith. We have had a group of citizens petitioning this town for almost two years. A year and a half, I think, in regards to this. It was not addressed in the comprehensive plan. It was not addressed with specific to those. There were changes made to the land use code. But until that zoning map is actually voted on, which will not happen by this board, it'll be the next board. Those concerns still have not been addressed until those are actually zoned as R four. And so I think what this was is saying, we have heard you and we want to take the time to make sure that the new board understands like this is the significance of what has gone on here. And saying we're going to put a resolution. It's us showing good faith. And I understand there are different people that have different opinions and that's great. And I'm glad they've shared those to you. But we have had many, many citizens for months. Come to this board and sit in meetings and send emails and reach out to us and to the planning commission, saying this is what we would like to see you do. And this is a way of saying, we've heard you and we'd like to acknowledge that. We're not promising it will get done. We're saying, we've heard what you said and we're passing it on to the next board. They will then make a decision on zoning as to whatever it is. And they'll have opportunity to hear from anyone who's concerned. And so I think this really does count down to us showing good faith, and I think that's why this is important. But this is not us promising something. It's us saying. We've heard what you said and we're going to make sure that information gets sent forward to the new board.
I could say, and I'm I'm hearing people too, but if if we could, then if this is something that we really have to do to say we've heard people, which. Again, I have heard it over and over again. We've made a lot of changes based on that voice, so. And I'm excited for that, but I'm not comfortable moving forward with this when it represents two entire streets. If we can maybe acknowledge that this would relate to items that are currently transitional or residential. That might be okay, but that still has three properties that I've specifically been talked to. You can't, there's a commercial property up there. We can't say that. We're acknowledging public comments to make those streets residential when they're commercial property. I'm I'm sorry, guys, but you can't take that. You can't just make a blanket resolution and make a change on someone's property without their consent.
We are not making a change on someone's property. That will not be done till the zoning map. So please be very clear in what you say. We are not changing anyone's property. So please don't share information. It's not correct.
Okay, I don't think that the public comments in particular identified current commercial properties. And the intent was that they said they want to change that to residential property. That the voice I heard was that my downtown beautiful historical home, I want it to be able to stay a home. And I agree. I think that's great. But the voice that I heard did not say. All the properties on Harrison Avenue, including a commercial property, should become residential. And that is how it's written. So that's why I'm recommending.
Are you maybe echoing sentiments that the mayor Pro Tem brought up then?
Yeah, I mean, we we hear things from the public all the time and we take that into consideration for everything that we do.
He he said this motion to move this.
I'm not, I'm not okay with it as it's written currently. For many reasons I already mentioned, and honestly, I'm just going over the same things again, so I'm going to stop, but.
What do you think? Anything else?
Out of the table, I mean, again, no matter what happens, it's not. The current planning commission is not going to deal with it because they need four people. The current board is not, this board is not, the next board is going to deal with this. I mean, I think that. I I think people who've been here in the audience realize that probably paddling upstream to try to. Go back to where we were originally. I don't think that's that's going to work. I'm of the view that I I would not support this at this time.
All right, that's it then. Let's open up to the public.
Sherelle Teaks, four, five, two, five Ingalls Drive. If I may just maybe suggest an amendment. I can see where Rebecca Kenny is coming from and suggest that the. Places that are resident are the C one, C two, stay that way. And the homes, these are people's homes. They want to know that they are still going to be there. And when this was brought up, you had a very large percentage of of people attending this meeting stating, please do something that gives us a bit of comfort. I understand in reading this that it's not rezoning anyone. It's not committing that property to anything. What it's saying is we are recognizing those residential homes, saying we have heard you. And we're going to follow through what we told you the last meeting we were here. It's a commitment thing. The ones that are zoned as the the C one district, fine, they're already zoned that way. But at least do an amendment that states the people that are in their homes now can remain in their homes as R four. I think that's what they were looking for this last time. I agree, you can assign someone's property, but that has to be changed through the zoning, so it's not going to matter right now anyways. I think what the residents are looking for is a good faith effort, knowing that when this board transitions. Their request is going to be recognized. That is how I read this document.
Christine Gator, downtown core. To give you perspective. We were promised. During the comp plan process that this would be dealt with during the land use code. Then during the land use code, we were promised it was going to be dealt with later on. So this board kept promising us, and so this is just your way of following through on that promise. Because it, we kept on getting pushed off. And so I think an amendment would be great. Leave the commercials commercials. Fifteen residents from Harrison and McKinley want their homes R four. Fifteen came to the meeting with Cody. Fifteen kept coming to meetings here. They were promised over and over again, so this is just to relieve their fears. Because you guys didn't follow through on your promise because you couldn't. And now you're leaving. And so they just want to let the new board know what you promised.
Any other comments? Okay, we're gonna bring it back to the board. Final discussion. Ben's thing.
I I think there's a huge fear out there of people are going to lose their homes or the ability to live in their homes. And that's just, that's not true. I just want to make sure everybody knows that. Nobody is going to be kicked out of their home, lose their home, required to sell their property. That can't happen. I want to make sure everybody's very clear on that. Because that seems to be like a fear that's happening, and that's not the case. So I want to make sure everybody knows that and from the bottom of my heart, because that that would be heartbreaking. I see why people are so scared because that that's kind of a.
Well, you think we're going to zone it commercial?
No, that's, it's been a rumor that's been spread that's really scaring people. That's what I'm worried about. And I think that's what's leading to this. So and I have one more point. The other thing is, I really hate to say that we didn't come through on promises. Entire sections of the comp plan were rewritten to acknowledge comments heard specifically as concerns from downtown residents. The entire R four zoning district description and uses were. Rewritten. There are so many new parts of it, additions and changes to acknowledge those specific concerns, too. And I hate because it's a lot of these comments that we're receiving or referring to are based on draft one comp plan. Draft one land use code. When all those comments came in and then we completely redid it to acknowledge those concerns. Yet the same fear and rumors are still out there that applied to, or maybe were misinterpreted from those first drafts. So I hate to say, we didn't come through on this, we didn't come through that, and we didn't come through on this. I really got to defend the process because there's a lot of work to go through all those comments and make sure they're all, you know, considered for the the revisions that were made in those documents. So I do, I have to acknowledge that, so.
Yeah, so the concerns that brought up come from the future land use map, which again is not a zoning map, which clearly identifies McKinley and Harrison as downtown core. Now, what was addressed through the process is that those areas should be viewed as R four. Now, that change has not happened because we haven't done the zoning map yet. So the reason people have concerns is we talk about all these changes that have been made to R four, which are great, and they're designed around that Harrison and McKinley. But the problem is, is the only official town policy document that we have, being our comprehensive plan, shows those two streets as core commercial. And that's why people still have concerns because they've been promised, we're going to fix it, we're going to fix it. It's an R four, but it's still. The only documentation the town has shows those two streets as C two commercial. That is in our future land use map. That's why people still have concerns. And to address the issues, if you read the resolution, it says. The board of trustees hereby acknowledges that public comments have been received expressing a desire to have residential properties. Along Harrison Avenue and McKinley Avenue zoned R four downtown neighborhoods. It specifically calls out only residential. It doesn't say every property. It doesn't say commercial. It doesn't say the entirety of the streets. It literally says only the residential properties. So it addresses the concerns that have been brought up. It it's. So it addresses the concerns that have been brought up. It, it's in the, it's in the resolution. So I would like to move that we approve resolution number fifteen, twenty twenty-two, a resolution acknowledging public comments related to zoning designations for residential properties along Harrison Avenue and McKinley Avenue.
We get a second? I'll second the motion. Put it to a vote. Little call, please.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Becky Kenny?
No, due to property owner comments.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Knitson?
No.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes. Okay, let's move on to four. Resolution number fifteen dash twenty twenty-two, resolution acknowledging public comments relating to zoning designation. Oh, wait a minute, I'm moving on.
Next one.
We're in the number fives, next page. All right, good job. First Amendment to Development Agreement for Bonfire Division. Oh my gosh, Cody, I'm screwing this up. I've got everything here.
I think, I think you're close. Item number five is a.
Amendment to the Development Agreement for the Bonfire Subdivision.
Thank you, Mayor. One more time, Cody Bird, Planning Director. This was a pretty complicated staff report and proposed amendment. I'm going to walk you through a couple pieces of this as highlights, and then give you an opportunity to ask any questions of a technical nature. There's a lot of technical components to this, and I think they just made it in that the developer representing this item and their counsel is also here as well. Do you want to acknowledge that? Mayor, do you want me to explain it?
Yes, please. Where, Mayor Pro Tim go.
If I, if I'm reading this situation correctly, it appears that the mayor Pro Tim Knitson has removed himself due to a conflict of interest.
Yeah, got it. Thank you for that.
So again, I'm, I'll give you some high level explanation as to what's involved in this agenda item. And then I'd also acknowledge an opportunity for the developer and their counsel to speak this as well. So just to give you some background, this, this project came to town staff's attention, probably September, October timeframe of last year. We were approached from legal counsel from a contract purchaser who's looking at acquiring two lots within the Bonfire Second Filings subdivision. They reached out to town staff and town legal counsel, asking a couple of questions or inquiries about title objections in their due diligence process. They had identified a number of things in their, again, inquiries, title objections isn't a nasty term. It's just a legal term defined that they had some questions that they wanted answered before they moved forward with a contract purchase. But those, those inquiries related to a requirement in the annexation agreement for the developer to contribute the non potable irrigation system, the, the rights to the well onsite to the town. That's the standard language in most of our annexation agreements. There was also an inquiry regarding some of the drainage ponds and the maintenance of those ponds, including a dedication to the town for drainage easement. Creation of a lot owners association to maintain the common grounds. The streets in the subdivision are private. The water lines are, and sewer lines are public, but streets, drainage are all private. The owners association was required in order to provide the maintenance of those common components. And the last inquiry was regarding the requirement of the town to underground power lines and overhead utilities, as well as install streetlights. Those last two items are in the municipal code as a requirement of the town to provide traffic safety and service reliability for overhead power lines. So those were the questions that were raised by the contract purchaser. The contract purchaser has a desire to acquire two of these lots in the subdivision to develop a light industrial purpose that as staff currently understands their business would be a permitted use within the light industrial zone district. And they've indicated a strong desire to locate within Wellington on this property and a desire to move things forward. As many in the construction and business related fields understand, they want to move fairly quickly. They've got commitments. They have to make pretty big financial commitments and they want to have an answer to some of these questions in order for them to proceed and make their, their decisions for their business. So high level, again, with this, the development agreement for the Bonfire Subdivision is already in place. It was recorded back in two thousand fifteen, two thousand fifteen or sixteen. And what this is in your packet is a proposed amendment to that existing development agreement to clarify what is still required on a couple of these things. To propose some alternative options to make sure that they get completed. And maybe most importantly, the contract purchaser is, it proposes allowing that particular sale and development to proceed while some of these other issues get worked out between the developer and the town. That was important from the contractor, excuse me, the contract purchaser's perspective, the developer's perspective, wanting to make the sale and move this forward. And from town staff's perspective, that this is a desirable business that wants to locate in Wellington and make their investments here. It seems fitting to find a way to let them proceed while some of these other matters get worked out from a technical standpoint and construction standpoint. So that's one of the basic tenants of this proposed amendment is to allow those lots to proceed for development purposes while the other things get worked out. I'll also point out that a bulk, the, the most of this agreement is related to the undergrounding of the power lines and the street lighting. The elements related to drainage, drainage, maintenance, the lot owners association, dedication of the wells. Those are relatively, they're technical points, but they're relatively easy to complete, and we don't have any concern that those would be completed. We just simply identified that they need to be done in the path forward for how to do those. But it provides the clarity that the contract purchaser, as we understand it, needs in order to feel comfortable moving forward. And there's no town costs to completing those items. Those are just things that procedurally need to be done. So the, most of this amendment is related to the undergrounding and the streetlight provisions. I'm going to probably kind of present this in reverse order of how the, the amendment is laid out and start with the subdivision, streetlights. Again, as I mentioned, those are, these are private streets within this, this subdivision. It's a horseshoe configuration, if you will. And at the time of development, the streetlights weren't installed. It has been identified as a code requirement. It's in the municipal code, streets provided with street lighting. To address the, the subdivision, streetlights are internal on those private streets. What staff recommended to the developer, and they, I believe they've agreed with this, but we can certainly hear from them too, was to simply postpone or defer that requirement to the time of site plan review for each of those lots as they develop. The developer indicated that those costs weren't built into the current pro forma. They need to sell some lots to get the funds to do that, and/or, and this was staff's suggestion, let the individual development provide a streetlight near their driveway entrance that would illuminate the, the street. And so that's, that was staff's suggestion was to defer that requirement. So it takes it off of the developer and puts it on the, the lot development, each business. Based on estimates from Pooter Valley Rural Electric Association, which is the power provider here, that subdivision streetlight expense was currently estimated about around thirty thousand dollars. So that would be thirty thousand dollars in value that we're recommending be deferred from the developer's responsibility and postpone to a later date. The second component I wanted to highlight is some of the, the town's considerations for some of the costs. Wasn't here at the time, not sure exactly what the requirement was or was not. I've had many conversations with the developer and the developers council regarding why was this required or not required? But the streetlights along Sixth Street were not installed. They weren't installed adjacent to the subdivision. They weren't installed adjacent to the Cameron facility when, when Cameron's building was, was built. Don't have an answer as to why that wasn't done, but we've acknowledged and we, everyone agrees, this is a, it's a code requirement and it's a traffic safety standpoint. It needs to be done. And so what, what town staff did was, was propose some options to work with the developer to find a path to get that done. But again, we, we looked at, you know, the, the request was made, we, you know, this wasn't a cost that was built into the developer's current pro forma. Timing was an issue, cash flow was an issue. And certainly adjacent to the Cameron facility, that property is already developed. The current developer who's involved in this request tonight wasn't even a party to that property or those requirements. So what staff's recommendation is, we feel like it's very reasonable for the town to participate in the expense for installing streetlights adjacent to Cameron. It's not reasonable to go back to Cameron and suddenly request when that's not, not only have a project in front of us to say you're required to put in these streetlights, but we recognize that they need to be done, and we recognize the balance in working with the developer to let their development move forward. So staff thinks it's reasonable for, if the town chooses to participate, the, the portion of that cost associated to the street lighting, based on the linear square, or linear footage for the total subdivisions, about forty percent of that linear footage is adjacent to Cameron, that forty percent estimated cost is currently about thirty thousand dollars. That was a reasonable amount for the town to expend to get this project completed. And then last, I wanted to discuss the, the undergrounding component. Again, this is kind of reverse orders how it was in the staff report and in the amendment to the development agreement, but the most complicated piece has been the undergrounding component of this. It's about twenty-six hundred linear feet of power lines that needs to be undergrounded. I'm sorry, it's a little less than that because the undergrounding next to Cameron was completed at the time of that site development. So that piece was done, the piece of undergrounding of the power lines adjacent to Bonfire Second Subdivision, which is the developer's development. That undergrounding was not completed. We've heard some theories as to why or why not. But the reality is we've, we've kind of tried to find a path to move it forward to get this, this needed improvement done. And so what we've proposed here is that the, we've got an estimated cost from Pooter Valley REA, the power provider, for what it would cost to underground that line. The estimate that Pooter Valley gave us, or gave the developer, was about a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars to underground that line or relocate it underground. That estimate was based on a, a one-ot line. I'm not an electrical engineer, but I asked a lot of questions of Pooter Valley REA, and their explanation was the one-ot is the gauge of wire. A smaller gauge, one-ots, a smaller gauge can only carry so much current to provide power supply to a subdivision. The current line is a four-ot line, so it's significantly larger, can carry quite a bit more power. The developer has acknowledged that if we put in a one-ot line that the estimate was for, the cost is less, but it may not provide all of the power supply needs for light industrial development in that subdivision. Staff's proposal was, and this is subject to board discussion, but our proposal was one-ot doesn't feel like it would be enough to meet the expected needs of light industrial development in this subdivision. Talking with Pooter Valley REA, they said two-ot should be sufficient to handle most any light industrial need within this subdivision, and they, and they can certainly provide that, but there is an additional cost, about a hundred thousand dollars to go from a one-ot to a two-ot that upsized. Staff's suggestion to the developer, and this is what is proposed in the amendment, was to, in consideration of making sure that for the town's perspective, to allow the broadest range of light industrial development in the subdivision to encourage and promote, and at least ensure the ability to meet the power needs for light industrial development here, that the town may want to participate at or near that forty percent mark, what we used for the, the street lighting component. And then knowing that those costs could increase in a little bit, we bumped up to forty-five thousand dollars as a starting point for staff recommendation. We feel that that's defensible based on the need to provide power for those, those in light industrial lots in the subdivision, and again, subject to, to board discussion. But so in total, the, the proposed amendment is contemplating the town's expense, if agreed to, could be thirty thousand dollars for the street lighting component adjacent to the Cameron facility. Forty-five thousand dollars for participating in the cost of undergrounding those lines to ensure that it's a higher gauge line to provide adequate power supply for future development. And postponing the requirements for the street, the internal street lighting to a later date to help the developer save those costs out of pocket that would otherwise be required to do that now. We also proposed, sorry, I'm going a little long, but it's pretty complicated. So we also proposed an escrow arrangement, and, and that again, was a timing component that we didn't want to force the developer to suddenly come up with cash out of pocket that doesn't exist today. So what we negotiated was it would be reasonable, or staff feels would be reasonable to allow at the time each lot is sold or developed within the subdivision, that a percentage amount tied to the square footage or proportionate amount of square footage to that property be put into escrow. That's an account that's held in trust by the town. It's earmarked funds. That money would be held by the town. In the event that the developer does not complete the required work, we would have the funds available from those, those escrow amounts to complete the work if the town had to do it on our own in the future. So that was, that was the kind of compromise to address the timing issue. We do have a, a line in here that says that the improvements seem to be completed within four years. And there's a trigger that if it, if a certain number of lots sell five out of nine lots remaining, or sold or developed prior to that, that that would initiate an option for the town to initiate that undergrounding requirement. So we've, we've tried to contemplate all of the scenarios that may come up. We've recognized that it's not a perfect scenario, but we tried to provide options that seemed reasonable and defensible for the board to consider. All said and done, it's about a hundred and five thousand dollars worth of valuation taken off the top of this project. And then the timeline pushed out to allow the developer to make some of these considerations and build those funds to complete the work. So I'm going to take a breath now. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I also want to acknowledge Mr. Doug Walker is the developer and his, his legal counsel. James Godbold is here this evening as well, if they would like to share anything. So I'm happy to answer any questions regarding my presentation.
I just had a quick comment before giving that. There's also some tax implications shown that show that it seems to me from, again, prior to the discussion, it seems like a reasonable investment to get this property moving along, and then it seems like there'll be a payback. Is, is it, will, could that be addressed either by you or our interim finance director as part of this presentation?
Yeah, and thank you for asking the question, Trustee Whitehouse. I, I meant to mention that and I was trying to wrap it up. Yeah. Thanks for bringing it up. So in your staff report, what I put together was taking a look at the twenty twenty-one is the best available currently, but I looked at the actual value in property taxes collected for the town of Wellington. I want to caveat that the property owner pays a lot of taxes. Not all of them come to Wellington. There's county tax, state tax, school districts. There's a lot of other entities that, that get those funds. But the, what's in the tables in your staff report are the, the Wellington taxes that come to the town from the actual twenty twenty-one collection for developed properties within the subdivision. That was about fifty thousand dollars in twenty twenty-one, and we think that's a reasonable number to, it's the best number that we have to kind of project forward. So what we did then was take those actual twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one collections for developed properties, calculated an average square, you know, average tax per square foot, and utilize that to project an estimated value or tax collection for the undeveloped properties. So that in the event that all of those undeveloped properties, nine lots in total, become developed based on the twenty twenty-one taxes, that would be an additional fifty-five thousand dollars in property tax coming to the town of Wellington. So about a hundred and five thousand dollars in taxes based on the twenty twenty-one estimates annually. So what we were really trying to highlight is that, that, that difference in undeveloped lots to developed lots will pay those commercial property taxes every year, and we want to make sure that we can develop light industrial properties for those light industrial purposes. So it was a means of identifying that there, there is a, a return on investment for participating to ensure that this development can move forward. And in particular, understanding that the, the current contract purchaser has stated their intentions to put in a pretty significant investment immediately if some of these issues can get remedied. So we've tried to provide information for the board so you understand that if you choose to spend town funds to partake in a project like this, there are revenues coming in, and knowing that commercial property taxes pay for other things besides just street lighting, but that there is a revenue stream and return for participation in some way.
So it's my understanding, and I, I, I don't know who the tenants are, but my understanding, there's a couple of people who wish to develop and maybe locate some, something here. I don't know what those are because that may be under negotiation. Is that, is that correct? They're all already people who, they're trying to get this cleared up, so. They're trying to get this cleared up. So those people who wish to invest. In a short period of time would be able to do that. Is that correct?
That's correct. The the contract purchaser that's identified in the in the amendment is. Indicated and and my understanding from the developer is that they've been in negotiation and trying to remedy some of these things for. A while and they've extended their contract a number of times. There's certainly a feeling of urgency for that company to be able to move forward on a Wellington site.
The item that I was looking at looks like it's identified, of course, in this amendment, but relates to increasing costs of all construction things. So if, for example, some of these tasks won't be completed for four years, it'd be obvious that those expenses would be larger at that time. So with the escrow amount, it says that it accommodates for increased costs for those type of the undergrounding, for example. And we think that's sufficient is as long as we have that escrow balance will be that would cover any of those delayed expenses. Even if they are significantly more money in the future.
So that was, I mean, obviously, that's a, we don't know how much. Costs could increase. So what and we had this conversation with with the developer and their council and I encouraged them to speak on this as well. But we what we had kind of proposed was. Taking that percentage of the escrow amount and increasing it a little bit at least to make sure that. We've at least factored something in for anticipated escalation in in construction costs. We don't know how much it could escalate. We don't know the exact timing of when it's installed or when the invoices are billed and when it's paid. So we tried to make sure that we understood that that from a board of trustees standpoint. It's difficult to agree to an undisclosed uncertain amount. And we tried to push everything back to these are certain amounts. If that's not reasonable in the developer's mind, this could always be amended again if if four years pass. And we have real construction costs at that time. There could be a second amendment that clarifies the the cost sharing if it's agreed to. So th- those are always options. So what we've tried to do is present something that town staff felt was reasonable for the board as a starting point for discussions. It's an actionable item if the board chooses to or can change any of these numbers or or the terms. Those are amendments that we'd be prepared to discuss. We're just trying to present the options and make sure that it was defensible and reasonable based on the information that staff has at our hands.
Yeah, I think that's the best we can do at this time and understanding too. And I I agree, I think. I think this is a great idea to get these projects moving, so.
Yeah, so I likewise do appreciate that we have people wanting to develop and build here. I I think waiting on the subdivision lights, that's a great idea. The Sixth Street Lights, I understand that portion with us. You know, obviously a portion of it being something that should have been done with Cameron, why it wasn't, we don't know. So I can understand us carrying the cost piece on that. The portion that I do have a concern with is in upgrading the power and I I get that that we want to develop that and I understand that there will be. Payback on that. The concern is, one, when is that money coming out of our budget? Because we're already tight on budget and trying to figure things out, so that money's got to come from somewhere. But two is I understand that we want that, but I also, you know, if a one hot line is not going to cut it. It's in the developer's best interest to have a two hot line. Otherwise, they're going to struggle to have people come into there to purchase their lots if there's not enough power there. So I do have a little bit of an issue where something that is in the develop, it's not. I I don't understand it if we're, because my understanding is this two out line is just running into that subdivision. That's not going to feed other properties past them. Is that correct?
So to speak to that that question, the the existing line comes in from the north.
Okay.
And it's it serves the the subdivision. So so yes, the existing line is four odd, it's significantly more, they'd be downgrading it to a one odd based on the current cost estimate. From Pooter Valley REA.
Okay.
But the then the subdivision circuits run off of that that line.
That one, okay.
Yes.
Because I because I understand like normally we do, normally we see this, it's what sewer, right? We say, okay, we're running a sewer pipe halfway up Sixth Street, we'll pay an extra. X number of dollars because we understand in ten years, we're going to have more developments that we're going to need to run more sewage through there, but with this power line, that is literally. Only going into that subdivision. It's not going to feed other parts of the town. And so I do have an issue where it needs to be upgraded to serve what the developer want to do there. Because to me that then sets a precedent where, okay, well, for this developer, we're we're gonna, you know, we're gonna pay for part of your doing what you need for your development. Well, then we have another developer come and say, well, why aren't you paying for what I need? Like I said, the streetlights piece, that makes sense, right? It wasn't, they weren't even part of the project at that point. So I do have a concern with just. Us stepping in and paying for something that they need to actually build out their lot potentially. And I mean, if they choose to not do that, then then they're potentially going to be looking at less price that they're going to be able to sell on that. So. The other pieces of it, I don't have as much concern. I just generally, I I agree, I would want to see more businesses come here. And I think it's doing things like exactly like delaying the streetlights and finding ways, how can we change some of our policies and things that we can do? Versus and again, if there are changes that need to be made because of an issue that is of no, you know, it's a policy we as a town have, but it's in no way connected to the owner. I get it where we need to step in on those, but when it's something that, you know, it's an existing requirement. It's serving their property. I have an issue with us taking taxpayer dollars to basically pay for a developer to do that. I understand it reduces profits. I understand it does. Not part of that cost and that's part of businesses, you have to adjust your prices and things based on that. So I I have no problems with the other two, but I do have some concerns with the. Upgrading the power line.
Okay, Trustee Whitehouse, one last one.
So I have, I think this what is, I mean, first off, I want to thank Mr. Bird for clarifying this because. I spent about three hours reading through this, trying to understand it. Now, I think what you're seeing is an example of what happened. Prior to Mr. Bird's arrival here, where we didn't have professional staff to oversee this. Some other examples of these little hiccups we found up found is. What the town calls track DAF, which is now finished on the east side, that was a pond because that was an illegal gravel quarry. We had to pony up with the developer, we negotiated a pretty good deal, but we still had to come up three hundred and seventy thousand dollars out of about a million dollar project. There's some infrastructure that what Park Meadows that was not stubbed out, that was supposed to be and the town had to pony up. To pay a reasonable amount to do stuff that a developer in the past should have should have done. I can't tell you why none of this stuff was done, but it wasn't and there aren't any streetlights on Jefferson, which. Supposed to be. There aren't any streetlights on Fifth running south of Ridley's Market, which are all code requirements. I don't know why they weren't done, but they weren't done. So I think trying to get to a solution makes sense. I mean, and I'm again generally supportive of this and. But this is not the first, these are the skeletons in the closet that keep popping up from projects that occurred prior to. Two thousand sixteen fifteen when we did not have the staffing levels to adequately oversee this and. I mean, I don't like it. I wish it was done. I don't know why the lights weren't put on a Cameron or anything else, but I don't know that we can peg those costs to. Somebody else, I mean. Yeah.
Final comment for me, I think I think you've done a really good job of trying to make this thing all. Cover a lot of things, please a developer and prepare away from some serious investment in our town. Because it's a it's a real, it's a it's a it's a real strategic piece of property north of our town. I, you know, I think it's a good thing. We're going to recover the money in taxes about two years. That's all there. So I like that and I'm in support of it and there's no other comments. I like to turn it over to public.
And I also wanted to remind you that the developer here, I said a couple of times, but I I just wanted to make sure that they had the opportunity to speak as well.
So I I was wondering, would before, after public comment would be, what what would be appropriate for?
I think it would make sense before.
Okay, Mr. Walker, would you like to come up?
Getting over, my name is James Godbold. I'm counsel on behalf of the developer. Wanted to address one of your questions about why, why should the town be covering part of the cost when it was developer responsibility? And the candid answer to that question is is when the developer first acquired the property in two thousand fifteen. It it was done at a time where there was the the four outline had just been put in place and was put in place overhead and there were verbal representations from. Prior town staff that they didn't want it put underground because it had just been put in and it didn't make sense to. Put something underground when it had already just been installed. And so I think that's part of it. It's been a long process getting to this stage.
They can't, folks can't hear you.
Okay, sure thing. It it's been a long process and a lot of back and forth. Getting to this stage with town staff on kind of an agreement for how to sort out what what the prior representations were to the developer. And balancing the requirements of the town against the developer's interest in not being. Put out an excessive amount based on kind of what he'd been told when he originally acquired the property and began the development process. So that's kind of a short answer to why we were looking for some contribution above and beyond knowing that it is a requirement to do it. When I do, I'd also like to point out is the the current purchaser that's under contract is also estimating. Roughly ten thousand dollars a year in sales tax and that's that's for the the single lot. Obviously, if you get some additional light industrial in there, that that amount we would expect to increase as well. So i- in general, I'll turn it over to Doug if he has any additional comments on behalf of the developer. I I think the one item that we would ask the town to consider is kind of a revision to the proposed first amendment. And this is something I talked to Dan about a a bit is under the current draft. It requires a forfeiture of the escrow funds in the event that. The town doesn't appropriate its share of the costs. So the way the way the first amendment's written. On the sale of the fifth lot, we send notice to the town and then the town has two years to appropriate funds. At that point, if it fails to appropriate the way it's currently written, the amounts that developer has escrowed are forfeited. We ask for a revision on that so that if the town chooses not to appropriate within those two years. Those escrow funds would be released back to the developer. And our, from our perspective, it it seems an extreme penalty to ask the developer to escrow the funds. Give the town the opportunity to participate and then if the town declines to participate, say, you lose your money that you've escrowed as part of this agreement. So that's the one revision that we would ask for. Other than that, I think we're comfortable with everything in the First Amendment. And it's been, it's been a long process getting there. So I think there's been quite a bit bit of give and take on behalf of both parties trying to find a way to. Get this to a place where where both sides are comfortable trying to move forward with it. Doug, do you have anything you want to add? Oh, um. I I think the developer also had a concern in the development agreement. I think it had set a hard deadline of December thirty first. Of this year to address some issues with detention ponds. I think he was looking for an extension of that date to either June of twenty twenty three or possibly even December of twenty twenty three. Just to ensure that he's got time to a- address those issues. Okay, and I don't know if the if the board has any questions for us.
Yes, I said a question, Dan, on the request you made about the revision to the forfeiture. Do you see any concerns with that? Because it's, if I'm understanding what he explained properly, they put the money in escrow and that's literally sits there. So in case he doesn't do the. What he's supposed to do, we can use those funds to do it. But if after that point, the stuff's been done, it's still sitting in escrow, we haven't done anything.
In this situation, it it wouldn't be done in the money sitting escrow. So so we had to write this contract and we went. Through a lot of different iterations on it to try and find the right balance because as a board, as we discussed earlier, you can't commit future boards. So we will have a situation where the developer will hit this trigger, which requires the undergrounding of the lots and. This contract says that the town will contribute forty five thousand dollars toward that. Well, that has to go through an appropriations process, that has to go through a budget process, which is certainly something that we want to incorporate into future budgets, so we can plan for that. So when that request comes in, we can come to the town and we can come to the board and say, there's been the request to to underground these lines. This is the background. We've budgeted forty five thousand dollars to do this. And that's why there's the two year time period. Trigger hits, we have two years to appropriate. But if the town board doesn't appropriate within that time. In our view, the escrowed funds are there to do this work. They're they're. Held just to do this work in case the developer doesn't. So if the town decides not to appropriate those funds, the developer is then relieved of the obligation to do it. It becomes the town's responsibility to underground it. And we will hold on to those funds and use those funds for the purpose of undergrounding that. Now, we've just said that the town didn't appropriate forty five thousand dollars to do it and we're also holding the money to do it. Well, there are also a lot of situations where the town may not appropriate the forty five thousand because it's a tight budget year. And that's something we could then plan for maybe two years down the road, but we think there's still an obligation to underground those lines. But we think that. The intent was that if the town can't do it within that time, the developer is relieved of the obligation. That money will still be used for that purpose. And that's generally how what an escrow is used for is. The developer put, provides that money to the town who holds it in case the developer does not meet their obligation to do the work. And in this case, we think that's what we're talking about.
So to clarify, because you talk about there's a trigger, that trigger is not necessarily them paying a contractor to. Under, because that's where I'm trying to understand is so. If what happens if they pay a contractor to underground lines, that money is sitting in escrow. Our board does not appropriate the funds. And then the those that escrow money still comes to us, even though they already did the work, because that's that what I'm seeing is the concern. I I understand if they don't do anything, they haven't paid anyone, they haven't done anything. I understand the escrow money coming to us to do it, but if they've done the work.
I I've been understanding this this concern being about if the work hasn't been done.
Yes.
The work has not been done. The trigger is the time period when they have to do the work.
Okay.
So that doesn't necessarily undergrounding the lines. The trigger is when a certain number of lots are sold or a timeframe. So what we're asking for is that that's that triggers their obligation to do it. They then come to the town and say, we're looking for, or the town's contribution is due. If the town can't do it, then the work isn't getting done at that time.
Okay.
And so we believe the town should hold on to that escrow for when the town can do that undergrounding work.
And that that's our understanding as well. Is it, it it's not that that we paid a contractor, hired a contractor. It's, we've hit the that sale of the fifth lot or or the fifth lot goes under contract. That's the trigger to notify the town. And then from that date, the town has two years to appropriate. And from our perspective. Continuing to to escrow funds contributed by the developer, when the town has had two years to appropriate and make a decision about whether it wants to. Move forward with the underground. From our mind, that seems like kind of ample opportunity for the town to decide, yeah, we want to do this or or no, we're going to let this developer. Off the hook. And so that's that's why we would like to see those escrowed funds returned and maybe the the solution is. An additional timeframe of of, you know, the town has two years to appropriate. If it decides not to appropriate in two years, it can hold the escrow for two additional years. Or one additional year to to try and make the decision about whether it's going to move forward with undergrounding before releasing the escrow. One other additional point about the escrow, the the current breakdown is about fifteen percent. Based on the estimates, about fifteen percent per lot. And we set it at eighteen percent to cover possible overages. So it would be, it would be contributing additional money into escrow kind of above and beyond what the current cost estimate is that we've been provided from Pooter Valley.
So does the escrow max out at the final cost of the undergrounding or does it just keep building to whatever?
Under the agreement, if the escrowed amount exceeds the actual cost, the. The the remainder goes back to the developers at that point.
Okay.
It is, but if it doesn't meet it, or I suppose. If it doesn't meet it, the developers, when the developer has the obligation to do this, if the escrowed amount is not sufficient. Escrow amount plus the town's contribution. If that's not sufficient to do the undergrounding, the developer is obligated to pay the what's on top of that. And it's if they come below, they get the escrowed amount back to.
And it's it's currently set at eighteen percent to to account for the fact that this may take several years and obviously there's going to be cost increases for getting the line. Done and put underground. And so the additional three percent per lot, the the hope is that it will offset some of those increases in cost.
And I think, I mean, the the concern is that the town has is given this notice of we will. It's time to underground these lines and the town board, whether it decides to or whether it just cannot appropriate sufficient funds at that time. I mean, I think the concern is that then the town keeps the escrowed funds and just sits on that and continues to not do the work.
Got it.
In in our mind, that escrow, the the escrow is held for the purpose of undergrounding power along Sixth Street and so. While we may not be able to do it within those two years, the town hopefully could budget to do it within. And so while we may not be able to do it within those two years, the town hopefully could budget to do it within three years. I mean, I I think the town staff, the town wants this done. And that money is earmarked specifically for that purpose. It does not go to the general fund or anything like that.
Yes, and I I think our concern is that it's it would. As it's currently drafted, there's there's the possibility that the money just sits in escrow forever. And without any real obligation on behalf of the town to undertake. The work to underground it if it doesn't appropriate in two years. And then it's it's kind of stuck indefinitely there. Without any set end date to the obligation that it remain in escrow, but without any set obligation on behalf of the town to. Use the money to do the work that had been set aside to do. So it's it's kind of stuck in this no man's land.
Is there, is there something that? I mean, it sounds like when we're talking about cost sharing, which is in fact, sounds like a contract. Is that correct for me to think about it that way?
It is, but contracts with with municipalities are always, when it comes to money are always a little bit of a challenge. Because as you might notice anywhere, this says where the town will contribute funds, it says comma, subject to appropriations. And so we're trying to find all of the, the what ifs in this to make sure that it works for the town and works for the developer as well as possible. So.
But does it, does it, does it offer an incentive for us to do the work?
The incentive for us to do the work is that the town wants.
They get the escrow money back. If we don't do the work.
That might.
So that offers an incentive for us to do the work. Is that right? Otherwise, they get the money back.
The the other incentive is that costs are probably going to go up. So the longer the town sits there and.
I think, I think the whole point of this thing is underground there. I mean, do the work. Right, you know?
I'm comfortable with that revision then. I agree, that makes a good point. It it puts us in the seat to get it done.
You disagree? Oh, just hear it.
Yeah, what if we have a project adjacent or something that we can also tie into an additional undergrounding project or something? We contributed to that, might be delayed a couple of years, might be this. I think the intention of using that money for undergrounding either now or in the future. Is how it's written and intended. So. I mean, the the money will be used for that whenever the town decides to do it.
Yeah, but I think that.
And then they won't have to pay anything extra if it costs more in the future beyond that, that time period. I mean, it's, I think it's written that way on purpose, I think.
I think our concern, twofold in response to that, our concern is that this was really. If the developers put escrowing the money, it's for developing or undergrounding just. The line that that he's responsible for, not tying into possibly future lines. And again, I think our concern is, as it's currently written. There's a possibility that this money is held in escrow indefinitely and then town never moves forward and doesn't really have a strong incentive necessarily to. Move forward with undergrounding the line and that money is just parked there. And what if it's. What if the undergrounding is never done? And then a decade down the line, that money's still sitting there and it can't be used for something else. But it's not coming back to the developer either. And so that's why we want to see, if it's not returned immediately at the end of the two-year appropriation. I think that's why we're looking for some kind of trigger that at some point, if it's not used by the town, it's kind of. It's kind of a make up your mind and do it or don't and then let us go.
I I think if if the board had desire to, the idea of. Two-year appropriation, if the town doesn't appropriate with that time and does not build within a couple of years, I think that's an amendment we could. We could draft into this and create in there. And then during the two-year period, I think if the town looks at its schedule and says. We actually are going to be undergrounding lines further up the street and being able to to do a larger project would make sense for us. I imagine the developer would. Be amenable at that time to discussing the town taking on that responsibility and, you know, and dealing with the escrow money then. But I I, so that would be an option would be to keep it as written with the change of if the town does not. Expend those escrow funds within two years of that date that it would be returned and then we could work from there, I think.
That sounds reasonable. The other question is, I know Pooter Valley REA and Excel both contribute funds for undergrounding projects. I mean, I don't know what those balances are and what are the triggers for actually utilizing that stuff. But I know there is some funding available through that to the town every year.
So to the question on the, on the undergrounding funds available through franchise agreements with Pooter Valley REA and Excel Energy. We do have some funds available to the town. Those are the town's funds for the purpose of undergrounding utility lines throughout the the community. I don't have those numbers in in my back pocket to tell you tonight, but I can tell you with absolute certainty. There's a lot more money in the Excel undergrounding funds than there are in the Pooter Valley REA undergrounding funds. The Pooter Valley REA service area is very kind of patchwork with Excel Energy. And this subdivision is Pooter Valley REA, the adjacent subdivision is is Excel. Portions of the residential development south of town are Pooter Valley REA. The school district is Pooter Valley REA, but most of the town is Excel. When we were working on undergrounding projects for the school district site. Some of the the power lines at an intersection there on. That was Byron White Street, County Road Nine. We did ask Pooter Valley to use a portion of the town's undergrounding funds to remedy a transformer and crossing. To make sure that that didn't get hung on the town in the future and to do it when there was cost savings with the school district. At that time, the the balance was around $10,000 for Pooter Valley REA. And we used a portion of that for that other project of the school district. So a very minimal amount in the Pooter Valley REA, but it would be expected to grow in the future.
Thank you.
And then going back to one of the other questions regarding the the escrowed funds. I I know that there was some dialogue. I don't know if it, and if it doesn't speak to us too. But if the concern is that if the town doesn't appropriate funds within that two years. That the funds are just sitting there in perpetuity, we don't want that, that doesn't do anyone any good. Is is it reasonable that after, if if the town isn't able to or chooses not to appropriate funds within that time period. The developer is oblig- is still obligated under the town requirements to underground power to complete that project. And the escrow gets reimbursed back to the developer. Is that at all a longer thinking? It certainly remedies the question of escrow funds sitting in perpetuity. Not quite.
Yeah, not, not quite. A- a- as it's currently written. If the town doesn't appropriate, the developer's off the hook for for future obligation to underground. And so I think the idea is that the the escrow funds are kind of there if the town decides to take undergrounding on its own. Without assistance of the developer. And I certainly understand the town may need some additional time if it doesn't appropriate within two years. I still think kind of the idea is that if it doesn't ever use those escrowed funds at some point. But we feel they ought to be released back to the developer. If it doesn't use it within a timeframe. It doesn't do the town any good to continue to have them sitting in account. If it's not going to use them. And so we're looking for a release a- at that point.
What if we did, I know the idea was brought up for an extension. So I know it's currently two years that the town has. And so if we give it an option of a two-year extension, that allows a new election. So a new board, so for the current board, for whatever reason at that time is just like, well, we're just not going to expend this money. There is going to be an election. And if at that point, we've had two separate sets of elected officials say, we're not willing to budget this project. At that point, I think that it's fair for us to say, all right, let's give them the money back. Because that does give us time to actually have two potential different sets of eyes actually look at this. And then at that point, the town is making a conscious decision to say, we're not going to spend the $45,000 to do this. At that point, that's on us. So now we've got to deal with that moving forward if that happens. So would that be amenable to you guys if we give an additional two-year extension? And then at that point, then it comes back to the developer if the town still has chosen not to do anything.
Yes, absolutely. I think we'd be fine with that. And I think from our perspective, it it gives the town. At that point, the cost to the town is $45,000. And if it doesn't do that within the two years and then the two-year extension. From our perspective, it seems unlikely that the town's going to, at some point in the future, say, well, we're going to swallow. $240,000 if it if it's not willing in that timeframe to appropriate $45,000 to get it done. And so that's why we're looking for some sort of trigger on our lease.
I think we can, I think we could work that into the amendment if that's the desire of the board to trigger some sort of release on it. I think we absolutely could do that.
That what we want. Sound pretty good. Okay, thank you. Let's turn it over to the public this time.
Good evening, everybody. I guess I should introduce myself. My name is Richard Serrano and I'm with Kaufman Robinson. So I am actually the potential purchaser of those two lots in the Bonfire subdivision. So I thought I should introduce myself and see if there's any questions on, from the trustees and or the audience out there about the company itself.
No questions, but thank you for considering Wellington for your investment.
I looked at numerous towns, Johnstown, Windsor area, Fort Collins, which we're located at now. And we love the site, beautiful views and the five and a half acres there.
So I can tell you, I've seen your conceptualism. I think it's just great.
It is, it is going to be a beautiful building. It is going to be a very beautiful building and we will take into the zero escaping in effect as well. So. Is is there any other questions?
I will find out. Want to talk about this?
That's a very good comment. There is probably not anything that individuals are using right now or at home. That our device or light device has not been used in the production of that. Cell phones, TVs, the lenses for videos, cameras. Everything all the way around, including there's a military aspect as well. It was originally designed by Harold Kaufman. That was designed as an electric propulsion system for space for satellites. It is still being used on satellites today. So our device or light device is being used on that. That keeps the satellites in a in a field and it can be maneuvered on there, you know, can have a lighter up there or flame up there. And it also is being used on on lenses, satellite lenses, you name it. So computers, everything all the way around. So we currently employ about 42 employees right now. We are in 22,000 square feet. The potential building is 40,000 square feet on the main level, 5,000 square feet on the second level. And it's just not the income tax, revenue tax are ringing in as well, but we have individuals that will be going out to lunch. We will be catering from some of the restaurants in town as well. And we are set to go probably to about 50 to 55 employees in the probably the next six to 12 months. Thank you.
This is really almost aerospace technology.
There there is, there is an aspect that is being used, you bet. There are, there are companies that we do business with. That are multi-multi-billion dollar companies that are probably, you guys could probably guess some of those, but because of the NDAs I have, I can't disclose that.
Thank you, sir, for coming to Wellington.
You bet. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Shrel Teets, 4525 Ingles Drive. I just wanted to clarify on this 40%, 45%. Sorry, I had to dart it outside for something. Is that a set percentage as far as $45,000? Or is that based on 45% depending on what the cost of the install is? So if the, say if the cost goes up, so upgrade to two watt. Say you're looking at about 275,000 for 1,061 linear feet installed. Is that 45%? Or is it $45,000?
It's a 45, in the contract itself, it's a $45,000 setup.
Okay, so it says town percent is 45%. And then it says town cost is 45,000. So I'm just trying to figure out.
Contract itself says $45,000.
Perfect. Okay, so that's a set. Got it. Sorry.
I think, yeah, yeah, just make sure we get all the information out there. And I do think Ms. Teets might have been outside at the moment. We were talking about that. The the percentage that was referred to is in the staff report. We looked at the the linear footage of the total project. And we have a cost estimate for that linear footage. For the town's portion that we we think is reasonable to pay for the the streetlights adjacent to the Cameron facility is about 40% of the total linear foot. Based on that 40% of linear footage for the entire street lighting project, that's how we determined. The $30,000 for the town's portion for streetlights adjacent to Cameron. That's where the percentage came from. But in the in the amendment, as as Mr. Sapienza said, it's tied to a fixed dollar amount. Any questions on the percentage? I just wanted to make really sure that that was clear, what was, how it was proposed. Thanks.
Thank you. Who wants to make a motion?
Perhaps help with a motion if somebody would like.
Okay. Wasn't sure, was looking at my computer.
I'm ready to make a motion. Wanted somebody wants to make a motion?
Like to get assistance from Mr. Sapienza on that.
Probably.
I'm happy to provide it. Move to approve the First Amendment to Bonfire Subdivision Development Agreement, authorize the mayor to execute the First Amendment with an. First amendment with an amendment to require the town to return escrow funds within two years after the town's timeframe for the town contribution. Subject to town attorney approval and instruct staff to record the memo with Leimer County Clerk and Recorder's Office.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes. Okay, looking forward to it. Moving on, I am six. Contract to complete a water and wastewater rate study, something we desperately need. For the record, trustee McDonald's in the house.
Victoria Runcle, interim finance director. Yes, several months ago, the, after working on the rate study for 2021, the board of trustees. And the then citizens roundtable recommended that the town. Complete a sewer and water rate study with a professional group. We actually put out an RFP and we put it to six different companies. Only three companies chose to give us a proposal. And the reason they, and the other three that didn't give us a proposal told us it was just because of staffing, their staffing issues, that they didn't have enough staff to do the work. So the three companies were Harvey Woodard and Haven Sawyer and Ref Tellus. Three staff members reviewed and their prices are here. I'm happy to read those. Three staff members reviewed the proposals and we decided that Ref Tellus was the best option. And the reason is that they are one of the biggest firms in Colorado and nationally. So when you go to conferences and things like that, they are always teaching about rates. So that's one of the major reasons. Their, their amount is actually $72,000. 72,855. And the prices range from 89 to 10, 59, 340. And 72, 855. The less, the the least cost option there was a brand new. That it was a brand new firm and it was, we didn't think they would bring the experience. And we weren't sure it was a four-page proposal and we weren't certain it was going to give us all the heft that we needed. So that's why we went with Ref Tellus for all those reasons. The. The prices did include, the most important thing is we wrote into the RFP that the prices had to include four different meetings. Two with the roundtable and two with the board. And the exact agenda for those meetings, we were not ready to give you yet. We're working on that. But it was definitely to ensure that we are capturing, what are the issues when you look at a rate structure? And what is the opinions of the boards and the roundtable about how do we do a rate structure? There's a lot of different ways to do a rate structure and we want to make certain that we get that upfront. Not at the very first meeting, obviously, but upfront in the process. So that when we do that, we're bringing you back a rate, you know, rate options that include. Those alternatives in the structure. The structure is the most important piece of that. The last time the town did embark on. The last time the town did embark on that, they did have one of these competitors. The budget was a hundred thousand dollars. They went and found that. However, the contract was only for seventy five thousand. That particular work was then taken by the finance department and reworked, if you will. So so I don't sure that people were particularly thrilled with the work that was done at the time. So that was another consideration when we evaluated the proposals. So again, we're in the same ballpark as you were in twenty nineteen. The seventy five this year, seventy five is what you paid to the company in twenty nineteen. So the next steps would be include on April twenty first, we are going to sit down with if if you approve the contract tonight that we would sit down with the proposer, Rep Tellus, and we would actually pound out the exact schedule and what you know, what decisions have to be made at every one. That would be done at the staff level. Just what are what are all the information we need? What's all the information we need? And make certain that we're, you know, getting this started. We've already started collecting a lot of information. And then we are proposing that on May twelfth, which is a, you know, we just set a date because we kind of had to with the with Raftellus with the proposer and staff, obviously, with this round table. So we've set that for May twelfth at this point. At that meeting, the round table participants would set their own dates. We're not, I mean, we would talk about them as, you know, Thursday night better than Wednesday night, whatever. And so we just had a set one though, at this point to get people organized. That is the schedule. The other schedule importance, and that was in the proposal and no proposer had a problem with this was that these have to be, we have to have decisions very late August or very early September because it has to feed into the budget process. So that was also in the proposal, nonnegotiable. And all three proposers stated they could do that. They were, nobody had any problems with that particular schedule. So that was another major issue for all of us. The round table members, I think, are the next major issue, which in a in a good way, who's going to be on the round table? And as I understand it, the town administrator, you you made idea, you gave provided ideas and you picked people off of your current boards. Thank you. And then they were asked if they would have the time or the interest to be on the round table. So we would use that same process to expedite the process. We're not getting, we're not going to advertise in the paper, you know, do that kind of thing. It's more of a expedited process. So that is what we're also recommending that we follow the same process as we did with the last round table. And again, we would start that. We would kick that off on May twelfth. Just and again, they would get to pick their own dates. So the budget, we will have to come back and ask you, we'll put this in the appropriation ordinance, but we did not actually budget this at the time. The twenty two budget was developed. So you can see that I've split it between the rate, the water rates and the sewer rates, just to, you know, split them the actual proposal that way. So that is my request. My request is that you approve the contract this evening with Raftellus. And that's all I have.
Question? Oh, okay.
Well, if you look at the list of clients and who they've worked for in Colorado, that's looks like they have plenty of experience. My understanding is last time the we were in Coran and I don't know if that's a rebrand of in here or not, but I think they're from the East Coast. Not sure if they really fully understood some of the issues that we face here. So this seems like a a strong candidate to me, in my opinion.
And the Woodard, actually, this is a really good question. It was actually they they teamed up with a woman in Montana, which was also one of our considerations when we looked at it. So they kind of put their name on it, but we were going to work with this woman who lives in Montana. And that was a, you know, you have all those issues too. That Raftellus is right down the road and they're very willing to come up here. We'd had that conversation about, you know, we are northern Colorado and we want you here. And they said, yes, we understand that. And they were very, actually, they were very positive about that.
Trustee Kay.
I'm really excited about this whole concept in general, to be able to understand and know how to appropriately bill for utilities. I think that's really important to make sure we're doing it the best way we can to plan for the future. So I think that's fantastic. I'm really happy reviewing the proposals here and I I totally agree with the 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 choice and the selection that you guys made. I think that's fantastic. So I appreciate that you guys said that and that they have a lot of local and Colorado experience because that's, I think that's going to be so vital for us to understand the future and everything that we need to do. Thanks.
Trustee Gator?
So I have a couple of items. This this one is more just, it's a minor thing, but it's not. Their entire proposal is city of Wellington. They call out all the other municipalities, town of, city of. And it's one thing if it was a one spot, but it was everywhere. And it's just like, okay, if you missed as simple a detail as that, I'm like, to me, it's a good question. Is this the quality? I'm like, we haven't even, we're just at a proposal and I'm like, this is a very minor thing. So that was again, not major, but it was just, it was something was just kind of like, okay, this is a the concern I have is it kind of feels like you've got other people that are higher priority test that you didn't even prioritize putting our actual correct name on there. So that's, again, I'm not saying that's what it is, but that is what was kind of communicated. So that was a minor concern. The other concerns I have is just really where we're going to come with the money to do this. I understand the need to do that, especially on the water side. I felt that we came up with a really good numbers from what Dave did with the sewer round table that are sewer rates. We had a really great tool put into that. And a lot of the concern was that we don't have staff time to redo all of that for water because there's a lot more intricacies. You've got summer use, you've got commercially sewers. It is what it is. It doesn't really change. So you don't have the tiers and all these crazy things that go with sewer. So I am concerned that I think we were at a pretty good spot with the sewer. So expending additional monies on that, I understand we need it for the water. But it's also a question as to where are we going to pull that money from? Because we're already very tight in that water budget. Our plant came in over budget or weren't even done yet. But the plant is coming in well above where it was at sixty. So I do have some concerns with that. So one redoing where I think we're in a good place on sewer. And so I don't think we should expend that money. And two, just where are we going to pay for it with the water stuff are kind of concerns I have.
We did look to to your budget question. We did look, they do, they, there are some line items that we're looking at professional services and things like that. The water utility feels like we can find the money for the water, you know, for that portion, the thirty seven thousand dollars, thirty six, thirty seven thousand dollars for that. So we did, we did talk about that and we think that we can do that within the existing budget. And yes, we'll have to, we'll bring it back to you explicitly about that. As to the sewer, I think that's a fair question to have. That and I would actually, just as a outside person coming in, I would agree with you. The sewer, Dave did a great job with the sewer and Megan, Megan, they both did a great job. I think this would just sort of make sure that it's consistent and that we're being if you will, you know, looking at both sides of the equation at the same time, so that whatever proposals that we're making, we understand it's a whole picture. Not just, you know, water. Oh, now sewer. Oh, now, you know, so that we're looking at it holistically is what my response would be. I would agree with you. It was a good, it was a good job. And I think we had that conversation internally in terms of that was really good. But I also think we need to look at it holistically with with a firm that they're seeing it together. That would be what I would say.
I mean, the other thing is I'm wondering is if we have the staff time to do this in the sense that water and wastewater are going to, they're going to start, they're going to be moving dirt by the end of this month. And I think it's all hands on deck for engineering and so you know, while Dave did a great job with that, and I I just don't know there's a throughput for staff and I think getting this done right, because I think no one was happy with the original study because it left out some stuff. So I still would be supportive because again, I mean, I think with some of the rates, we didn't really have any way to look at. We had no information or data how we might be able to equitably or appropriately set rates for commercial users, I think, that which is why we left them sort of very similar to the residential rate.
You did.
Because we didn't have the information to make an informed decision regarding what was appropriate. So I think having that information. It's just one of the things municipalities going to do as we grow up. We got to get a hold of it, hold the tiger. So.
I think the question about time, people's time, just generally in this organization is a good one because people are very, very busy in this organization. The I I don't want to speak for Megan or Bob. We are all dedicated to this and we've actually brought in a staff member who knows some water issues that can help us just pull information, things like that. So we have, we're looking at resources, not just, you know, I I don't think, and I shouldn't talk for Dave, but you're right, they're going to be very busy. So I think it's really going to be Megan, Bob, myself, and you know, all the resources that we can gather out of finance is what I think finance will play a major role too.
Okay. I can't tell you. I'm really glad that you're moving out with it. It's very important to get these rates understood. We've all been waiting for this kind of information to be done again. So it really needs, it's it's paramount to our town. And sooner the better. So let's get on with it. Yeah, because go over everything again and again, if you have to, a couple of times.
And I always look for the town over city. Sorry.
Find the money, make it work, you know, let's do it right this time. Last time wasn't good. No other questions, right? Hey, public comments on this?
Kent Allen, six, eight, six, three McClellan. Hey, I was a member of the round table for wastewater and I just want to point a clarification. We did not say we would like a study of rates for the sewer system. We recommended for the water system, not the sewer system. We thought Dave's work was fantastic. In the meeting with the board afterwards, we said water, we did not say sewer, please, please, please clarify that. In that being, why do we want to spend another thirty six K for a study for the sewer system? We spent a lot of time going through all those papers. We spent a lot of time reviewing it. Wasn't our work good enough?
Sure.
Now, now you want us to do another round table and then come back and do it. And two months later, redo it again. It's you know, I feel like we haven't been listened to. I really do.
Then you're satisfied with the water rate, sewer rates where they're at right now.
We were satisfied, the whole board, whole round table was satisfied with the sewer. We were not satisfied with water.
Makes sense. Thanks, sir.
I think trustee Whitehouse, you mentioned, and this might be a good clarification for either Megan or maybe Victoria. The previous, did we address both commercial and residential wastewater rates at that round table or just residential? Because I think that that was really the concern. I think that the round table and staff for clarification did a phenomenal job assessing the residential rates. I think the concern was that we were trying to evaluate the commercial rates and it just didn't add up right. So we wanted to make sure that the commercial wastewater specifically was addressed at the commercial rate. So I don't want, I I certainly don't think that this is intended to diminish the work that the round table did at all.
I don't recall even discussing in the meeting with you guys, the commercial rates.
Great, yeah.
Right.
Thank you.
Why should the commercial rates be different?
Well, they were too, they're too low. They haven't been adjusted either. I think that that's the issue.
Lisa Cholet, seventy four, twenty four Home Stretch Drive, also a member of the sewer rate round table. I will reiterate what he said. We did not recommend a water study on the sewer rates. Waterway rates, yes. I think it's important right now as a fiscally budget friendly person the water, the water rate study has to happen for residential and commercial. That will actually give us a really great base point if we need to adjust the commercial sewer rates. Because the the percentage difference would be proportionate, right? I mean, if you're cheating, if commercials paying fifteen percent more than residential for a water, why wouldn't they pay fifteen percent more for sewer? I think there's a lot of work and a lot of time, a lot of staff time spent to teach those of us that are on the round table. I would also hope that those of us that were on the round table would be invited and retained by the new board. Because to be perfectly honest with you, borrowing a phrase that my friend Tim over at trustee Whitehouse and I were discussing opportunity costs, the more time that's spent reteaching a fire hose amount of information to a group of people is time taken away from other things that this town really, really needs to have happen at the same time. But frankly, if it were any other time in a different kind of budget, I would say get them both done. But my suggestion would be pay the money for the water. And in two years, if we need to, or five years, or whatever the situation is, when it's time to do another study, then do both. But we're really not in a position to spend money on something that right now is working well and we can make adjustments pretty education based once the other study is done. Just my one thought on that. Thanks.
Thank you, Lisa. Anyone else? Okay, we're bringing it back to the board. Final comments on the sewer rates.
I did just want to thank our members of the round table for sharing your comments. And I I would agree with that. This is why we went with a round table was to get the perspective of the residents, right? People that live here that do the thing and they worked really hard with staff. And the whole thing that we came back to was Dave did a fantastic job. And the problem was we can't have Dave do that again. He's got other things he needs to focus on. And I agree with that. And so I would agree, we've got so much other stuff right now in the budget that we're trying to work through and figure out. I really think we need to separate it out, do just the water. Respect that we got great information from our sewer round table. We've all talked about how good of a success it was. Let that be for now and we can come back and revisit that down the road.
You're of the mindset to get rid of the.
To move the sewer and just do the water portion.
What do you think, trustee Kay?
I'm currently going to page sixteen of the the proposal. And the reason why I'm doing that is I'm going to list the project team. And Dave's getting all these props, so I'll give him some more. Obviously, he's amazing. But what he is not are the items that we see listed in this project team that would be working on half the consultant. And these are folks who their expertise are rates and utilities. Dave is talented in many things, but his expertise isn't specifically rates and utilities. So that's the purpose of hiring a consultant that works specifically in this field and has I think our resident round table did amazing and they are the the example of success that I think it will apply to many different things. But they also worked within the confines and the limitations of the information that was provided to them and the recommendations and and creative thoughts that they had. Imagine if we brought that same very dedicated, talented group and provided them with all the resources of people whose expertise in business is specifically rates on top of everything else that we've learned so far. That's where we get the total package. And I I I don't think that this RP is done in a way where you can pick one or the other. That's a question I have. So it's, I think it's a all in encompassing rate study. But this isn't specific, like you could just take off half and only do one or the other. That's my guess, but we can get clarification on that. But the reason why I initially recommended this, and I know it's come from many directions though, is that we've been doing this piecemeal this whole time. We approached water rates for residents. Approach impact fees. Nobody's mentioned that yet tonight, but that's a whole nother beast and that definitely impacts sewer rates. And all those items too. We then talked about commercial rates for water. Then we talked about sewer rates for residents. And we did each one of these separately and made decisions on the next one based off the previous decision we had made. So that was how we built our calculation is off one decision that then built into the calculation of the next decision that built into the calculation of the next decision. And that's not the holistic view that we need to work with. What we need to do is get experts in the field of rates, understand the best methods, the best ways to make sure that our residents are never overpaying and that we're utilizing that money as much as possible, the most optimum way. And we get that by doing a professional study by a really good firm and having much better expectations than the last time we ever approached this. So I think this is essential because we will continue making the best decision as we always have and intended to do, but with this much information when we could be getting a lot more. So the intentions and work of. So the intentions and work of everybody in this room is, have been fantastic. So just imagine what you can do with more.
Well, this, with the, I guess this is a question to staff regarding, you know, do you concur that what are your thoughts of doing only the water rate study part of it and not both of them together? Is there an opinion you could render on this?
Megan Smith, deputy director of Public Works. The, what I would point out, and, and I've heard it already reiterated both on the board already, but is the, the wastewater rates effort that we did was heavily focused on residential. It didn't include a commercial, it didn't include impact fees that trustee Kenny had just mentioned for. So that, that, that is something that also is, it would be included in this for both water and wastewater. Commercial expectations for, for sewer is different than even just for water demand for, it's a much more based on the, the type of customer that you have and the load that they produce to the, to the wastewater treatment plan. And right now, we're not capturing that in any way, shape or form. That's, that is very important and is something I was really looking forward to having included in this effort with the sewer rates, the wastewater rate study.
I understood your question to be, can the board approve just part of this contract for just the wastewater? Was that your question or was?
I thought it was to get, I'm sorry.
Oh, well, that's, that was not my question. I was just wondering how comfortable staff was to say, if we only chose, we have the scope of work. Now, that may in fact increase the price because that's another question because this is be basically cutting the scope of work in half.
Scope of work was for us, or the RFP was for a sewer and water study and this contract is for a sewer and water study. And so while the staff memo lists out twenty-three thousand dollars as how it would be appropriated, that does not correspond to anything in the contract. That would mean you could just cut out thirty-six thousand dollars. I, I think it would have to go out for a whole new RFP and a whole new evaluation process.
Yeah, I, I mean, at this, I, I asked the question about the impacts because I wanted to get the perspective from staff. I would, at this point, I think I know enough to say I would be supportive of doing the contract that covers both water and sewer. And this is nothing to denigrate anything the round table did because actually most of your recommendations were rolled into what those decisions were. So I mean, I think that I, I, I thought you guys did a fantastic job and I've said this before. And I think utilizing that, that forum in the future is a great, it's a great thing, so.
I want to motion. You guys have anything to say?
I have a question for that procedurally. Are we, would we be motioning to approve the contract and amend the budget in the same? Or those, is that going to be a separate thing brought upon us, brought to us later?
A budget, there's several budget amendments that we need to put together in a package for you.
That's what I was assuming. I was a little worried about that. Okay.
Sorry, no.
I'd like to entertain a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Let's hear it.
That we approve the contract to complete a water and wastewater rate study presented by Riff Talis by staff in the packet.
Go second to that.
Go call, please.
Trustee Gator?
No.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes. Can we move on? Item seven, resolution number sixteen dash twenty-two. It's a resolution terminating the pandemic and emergency declaration.
So let's get rid of this emergency declaration. Patty Garcia, your town administrator. So this was adopted in March of twenty twenty. I think it's only fitting that it's the last meeting of the mayor and, and mayor pro tem and trustee Whitehouse that this resolution gets adopted and we rescind this emergency declaration and we just move on with our life post COVID. So the information is in there, the resolution is there and ready to go. And hopefully you all will support staff's recommendation to approve this.
Questions aside? None? Public comment on the emergency? Want to keep it? You want to keep it?
Christine Gator, downtown core. I do agree with this resolution. The part I don't agree with is, it says whereas vaccines to prevent the spread of COVID, the Gaya, Geta. As the reason for why we're rescinding the emergency declaration, which I don't remember ever hearing that from any of you as to the reason why you want to get rid of this. So I just wanted to say, the real reason is because there's no funding connected to staying in a state of emergency. And I wish it, it said the truth. Instead, it says not the truth, but I just wanted to clarify, pass it as it is. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Miss Gator. Anyone else? Okay, bring it back to the board. Anyone want to make a motion?
Make a motion, we approve resolution sixteen, twenty-two, a resolution terminating the pandemic emergency declaration.
Second?
Go call, please.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes. Hallelujah. All right. Item eight, request for a special meeting on April nineteenth, twenty-two. Ms. Patty, let's hear it.
Pretty short. The mayor can call a special meeting, but when we have the opportunity to bring that to you beforehand and make it more of a public declaration that the Board of Trustees is a, is approving a request for a special meeting, we're doing that. So this would be a special meeting on April nineteenth, at which time the new Board of Trustees will be sworn in. A mayor pro tem will be selected and then we will go into a work session with the new trustees that have been seated. Staff recommends approval of the request.
Comment. Is the work session public?
Always.
All right, public comment on this? Okay. All right, we'll be there.
Me too.
Do we need a motion? Okay, I would like to move that we hold a special meeting for April nineteenth, twenty-two to swear in the new Board of Trustees.
What time?
At six, six-thirty?
Correct.
So at six-thirty PM.
Second.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Hmm, okay.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
No.
Oh, stop it. It's your last one.
I did call me, yes. For the record, that was a joke. For the record, please. All right, that does it for action items. Let's get on to some reports real quick. Town attorney, anything?
I've appreciated the opportunity to work with members of this board that will no longer be members of this board coming next week, so it's really been an honor to get to know you and so thanks for the opportunity to be here. I'm excited to work with this new board and we're already getting questions about interesting new ideas, so the work progresses.
Honored to work with you, sir. Town administrator?
Two quick things. The bonfire item tonight, which was a lot of work. So I really thank you guys for all the questions and everything that went into put, put, we put into that. This is, you know, I'm thinking seriously about how economic development starts working in Wellington. This was a low water user, someone who was bringing income into Wellington. So this was the perfect time to start with just a template of an incentive agreement. So I appreciate your time and your thought process through that. The second item is thank you. So thank you to White Knutson and to Mayor Hammond and to Tim Whitehouse for your time here. You guys have had to work so hard. I've only been here a year and a half and the things you've had to accomplish in those, in those months has just been amazing. So thank you for letting me work with you and I've appreciated every minute. And I have a whole new team we'll be working with very shortly, so excited for that. And it sounds like all of us are going to the Colorado Municipal League Conference. So it's going to be a really, hopefully a great time of bonding and meeting other elected officials and things like that. I think it's really a great way to start off with this new administration. So I wanted to thank you all.
Thank you, Patty.
Anything from staff? No? Okay. Board, board members, start with you, trustee Gator, you got anything?
I do. I wanted to give an update on the pilot program, Crystal. Could you make me a presenter? Did you want to go around to other people first while? Crystal?
Yeah, let's go around to other people. Anything? Trustee McDonald, anything?
No, I just, knowing what I little, a little I know about what's been going on here development wise, that that bonfire thing was a major coup and I think really shows Mr. Byrd's tenacity in finding a reasonable solution through something that has been a little muddled for more than a little bit of time. So congra, you know, congratulations. Well done.
I have a couple of things. There are current, there currently are openings in boards and commissions right now. Applicants are really encouraged to apply online at the town of Wellington website. You can go there and click on the link that says boards and commissions and they will list the, the ones that have openings available and then a link to the application. So please apply soon if you're interested. Because those, some of those openings are happening next week. So we'll need new people and some new dedicated volunteers to fill the places of these empty spots. Second, we're having our town hall coming up. You're going to hear about this in a lot of different avenues, but on the twenty-seventh at six PM, am I right? Tell me. I believe I'm right.
Yes.
Yes. So the purpose of this town hall is to hear the people. So we want to know what you think, want, everything. I don't know all the details of it yet, but the idea of it is very inspiring that we'll take all the messaging, all the information that we receive from the community, from that event and other things as well, like surveys and everything else that we've been doing up to this point, to roll directly into our strategic plans for this next couple of years with our new board. So I really encourage everybody to be involved because you will be shaping the actual discussions that we're deciding to prioritize that weekend immediately following. So never before will your voice be heard so quickly and be implemented so quickly. So please participate and come. Thank you.
Trustee Gator?
All right. So did want to just share an update on the transportation pilot program. I was fitting Mayor Hammond with this being your last official meeting. You were a part of this getting started, so. So the background on this actually started back around the time of our comprehensive plan. I met with Betty Aragon and Adriana Quintero. So Betty Aragon is Mu Harris de Colores. And Adriana is with Colorado Trust. They're both members of Hispanic community who live here in Wellington. And they really had a lot of concerns with how the Hispanic community was being heard and they really, their voice wasn't being heard. So I met with them initially and then we had a meeting with Mayor Hammond and Patty Garcia, the Hispanic community. We also had two of our county commissioners come out and join us for that. And one of the major things that came out of that was that there were a lot of people that had limited cars and they needed to get into Fort Collins. And so that began a process and it's been over a year that we've been working on this of finding out what would people utilize, what would they need? Couple of things that came out of that, about fifty-one percent of the people that responded to our survey said they utilized highway one. So they're kind of used, utilizing that north Fort Collins corridor into Fort Collins. And then ninety percent of the people who responded go to Fort Collins is one of the primary places that they head into. And so what we looked at is how can we work to find something out to get that going? And really the goal is to do a proof of concept to see, will people use this? It's one thing to fill out a survey. So what we have is we've kind of got the perfect situation to make this work. So our senior center received a new bus through a grant. And so their old bus is currently not being utilized. And so what we're going to do is we're going to be utilizing the senior center's bus. We are going to work on getting a volunteer driver. There will be some compensation for them. We're still working details on that. There will be requirements for clean driving record and things like that. The bus currently, I believe the insurance on it is paid through June. And so there's no additional cost for us to do this. It's not something that we're going to have to pay extra money. So the costs on that are, I'll get to those in a second. What the plan is, is we'll basically run from basically Centennial Park down to the north Fort Collins bus station, right on College. Or not College, it's on Howser Mason. But right there, they have that center. Patty Garcia has already talked with Fort Collins. They are happy to work with us on that. We just need to let them know times and dates. And so they can know when, when they expect us there. And the current plan is to do two trips a week, one in the morning, or two trips, two days a week. So a morning and afternoon trip. So a trip in the morning, a trip back and then a trip in the afternoon and back to that two days a week. And we currently have a survey that is out so people can let us know what days and times. Currently, we're looking at roughly expenses somewhere to four hundred to five hundred dollars. We don't know exactly what that's going to be with gas prices continually changing. Our expenses are basically to be fuel, again, some level of compensation for the driver and then just generally maintenance. Moving forward, insurance will be a cost, but as I said, through June, which is kind of the idea is run it for a month. There's no additional cost for insurance to the town. As far as how to pay for that, we will be having a fair, it's not going to be a massive fair that's charged, but we are going to be charging something for that. But the other thing that I'm really focusing on is really looking at donations. And so I did clear with staff that is something we can absolutely do. I know Betty is going to be working with people that are willing to donate money. I've already had community members that are willing to donate money. I'm personally going to be putting at least a hundred dollars into this as a donation because it was my idea. And so really the goal is, because this is not a budgeted expense for the town, is that we as a community say this is important for us to step up and say, hey, we want to see if this, and again, the idea is proof of concept. If no one uses it, then we'll know. It's a great idea, but it's not ready yet. But if we see that there are a lot of people using it, then that becomes a conversation for the future board to look at. Okay, how do we work with Fort Collins on actually making this work? So very excited with that. The survey is live now. And this survey is really short and simple. What days and what times would you use the route? And so if you would utilize this or have ideas on that, please take time to fill it out. We have the survey in both English and in Spanish. It does close on the twenty-second, so it's not up for long because our goal is to get this rolling out fairly quickly into May. So we want to capture feedback from that and then we'll use that to watch the pilot. So that's where we're at with that. But did want to give an update and again, thank you to Mayor Hammond because you were a big part of working with the Hispanic community to move this forward. And so here it goes.
Nice job, John.
Thank you.
That's good, thank you.
What do you think?
What do I think? I got nine forty-two. I like the motion during the meeting. Call in favor, aye? Thank you, folks.